Take the call this meeting to order the planning and zoning, Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission. It's 5:30, December 16th, 2021. We're in administration building 1500 Highway 2 Sandpoint, Idaho, first floor conference room. We're online Zoom, teleconference and YouTube livestream. We'll talk about that here in a little bit. So if everybody would stand up, we'll say.
Commissioner Frankenbaum.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Reed.
And we have one commissioner on line.
Commissioner Lasso.
And Commissioner Bayless Chair. Any changes in the agenda? We have one, we added one set of minutes. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yeah.
August 5th and December 2nd. Okay, so we'll pass those on. So last couple of weeks, there's been some shots against staff commissioners, prosecutors' office and even us. And that really shouldn't happen in here. This is not the form to go after anybody, including your name. So I hope that we can all kind of have a good forum tonight, work through this and come out with a resolution. So our first file, it's 5:33. 1500 Highway 2 Sandpoint, Idaho. First floor conference room. First file is AM 0018-20. And zone change 0015-20, comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change. Dunham Construction LLC is requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment. Agricultural forestry 1020 to rural residential 510. And his own change from agricultural forestry 10 to rural 5. The 116 acre property is currently zoned Ag Forest 10. Project is located off Spirit Lake Cut Off Road in section 27. Township 55 North Range 4 West, Brazing River. Board of County Commissioners at their June 24, 2021 public hearing remanded this file back to Planning and Zoning Commission. Here it de novo. Any comments of interest? No, no. Thought I heard Suzanne say no. Okay.
No.
All right, thank you. So with that, if the audience, turn your cell phones off, please.
Perfect timing, perfect.
Anybody, everybody can hear? No one needs any speaking device, hearing devices. Okay, thank you. Good staff, present the project. Jason?
Thank you, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are here to discuss file AM 0018-20, file ZZ 0015-20, a comp plan amendment and zone change. As you heard, the applicant is requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment from Ag Forest land to rural residential. And a zone change from agricultural forestry 10 to rural 5. So the area in question is highlighted in blue in that aerial photo there, as well as the dates that the required noticing was done on this file. So the parcels in question are vacant and unplatted. The area in question is 160 acres total. Spirit Lake Cut Off provides access to the property. This is a secondary arterial paved with hot mix asphalt and is county owned and maintained. There's no well or septic on site at this time. And the site is served by Spirit Lake Fire, Avista and Bonner School District number 83. So we have the land use designation and the zoning maps up there. Land use designation is agricultural forestry and the zoning is Ag Forest 10. Environmental features on the site are pretty unremarkable. It's almost entirely flat, at least as far as our GIS is concerned. There is one small little yellow smudge in there that is some slopes that are less than 30%. As far as the soils go, the dark green area is prime farmland, whereas the maroonish brown area is not. What you see on the screen there now are the agencies that were noticed in the course of reviewing this project. So at the time this staff report was prepared, three public comments were received on this de novo application. Summary of the concerns outlined in these comments are concerns over spot zoning, the presence of nearby agriculture, the presence of prime farmland soils on the site. Concerns about water and septic availability, concerns of wildlife and concern over fire or emergency safety. There were several comments received after preparation and finalization of the staff report that restate the same concerns noted above. A petition opposing this de novo proposal was submitted with 35 signatures. Of course, there's no provision in code or in the comp plan to consider petitions when concerning land use proposals or decisions. All previous public and agency comments that were submitted on this file are still included in the record and were forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for re-review prior to this hearing. As far as the agency comments go, we got a comment from Fish and Game with concerns over the impact of development on Hoodoo Creek. The comment states that there will be plentiful wildlife habitat remaining with quote, "large tracts of state of Idaho, Kinnick Sioux National Forest and agricultural lands near to the proposed application area," end quote. There was also concern over human wildlife interactions. The summary of the comments delivered from Idaho Fish and Game, I'll just go ahead and read it into the record here. Quote, "In summary, wildlife use will be negatively impacted within the immediate areas where conversion of forest to further subdivision and development occur. While the habitat and many of the species are currently common and similar resources are available nearby, continued development will change the abundance, diversity and distribution of wildlife within Bonner County," end quote. Spirit Lake Fire comments came in, they were received after preparation of the staff report. The comment opens with, "In consideration of splitting the zoned Ag Forest land from 10 acres to five acres, there are deficiencies in the current infrastructure that should be addressed prior to approving a split." I won't bother to read the individual points there because this is not a review for splitting land. We are not here today to review a subdivision. There has been no subdivision request made and that's not what we're here to review. It would be inappropriate to review this comp plan amendment and zone change request as though it was a subdivision when it is not. These comments, however, would be helpful and appropriate if submitted if and when a request for a subdivision was made on the area in question. We did get a late comment from Panhandle Health. Essentially, we got a comment saying that eight septic site evaluations were done on the site and eight suitable locations were identified. Of course, as mentioned before, several previous staff reports have been prepared on this proposal and several presentations have been given previously. These previous staff reports and presentations are in the record and were submitted to planning and zoning to cover and also covered all the public and agency comments that we've received. So getting into the review, the standards review on this application here, first looking at the comprehensive plan map amendment that's been requested. Current comprehensive plan map designation is Ag Forest land. The Ag Forest land designation recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail. That is 30% or greater and where transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slope, poor soil conditions, hazard areas and lack of police or fire services. So in reviewing this, this site is mostly flat, has only a very small area of slopes, but they are less than 30% grade. So there are, there are no 30% or greater slopes. Access to the site is provided by Spirit Lake Cut Off. It's a secondary arterial paved and is county owned and maintained. Site does not feature urban water or sewer service. There are no obvious challenges to residential development on this site. The site has no known hazard areas and has police, fire and ambulance services. The site does not have poor soils. So in summary, this site does not appear suited to the comprehensive plan designation of Ag Forest. It is missing almost every criteria for this designation. The fact that it lacks urban services alone isn't sufficient to designate this land as Ag Forest as a lack of urban services is also a standard found in the rural residential land use designation. So looking at the rural residential designation that's requested. The rural residential area provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to 30%. These areas include critical hazard, include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources and exposure to loss of property or lives, small scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So as previously stated, water and sewer service are not present on the site. There are no map slopes of greater than 30% and no known hazard areas. It is worth pointing out that this designation is specifically designed to accommodate critical wildlife habitat as cited up there in the section from the comp plan. And furthermore, no agency comments called this site out as critical wildlife habitat. The density allowed under this designation serves to reduce potential impacts to resources and exposures to loss of property or lives. Small scale ag uses, including logging and residential development will continue to be permitted under this designation. So in summary, the site has no features that make it incompatible with the rural residential land use designation. And there appears to be no reason to deny the applicant the request to redesignate this site as rural residential. So as far as the zoning review goes on this site, the site in question is currently zoned AF10. And the zone is appropriate in areas designated by the comprehensive plan as Ag Forest land, but as we saw above, this site above does not appear to be suited to the comp plan designation of Ag Forest land because it is missing every unique criteria for this designation. Because this site is not appropriate to be designated as Ag Forest land, it then follows that this site is not appropriate to remain zoned as AF10. We're going to have to come up with a new zoning for it. So as far as rural zoning goes, the rural district is established to allow low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. This purpose is accomplished by limiting residential densities and permitted uses to those that are compatible with rural character and with nearby resource production districts that would include farming and sites that can be adequately supported by rural service levels. This designation allows for small scale farming and forestry activities as well as tourism and recreation uses that can be supported at rural service levels and which are compatible with rural character. Encouraging conservation development configurations creates permanent open, that create permanent open space or farming areas, protects sensitive environmental features, reduce infrastructure costs and/or enhance recreational opportunities. So inside of rural zoning, there are two possible choices. There's R10 and there's R5 zoning. R10 zoning is for areas designated as rural residential in the comp plan that meet one or more of the listed criteria that you see. That is characterized by slopes that are steeper than 30% that are located within critical wildlife habitat as identified by federal, state or local agencies that contain prime agricultural soils that are served by network of public and or private roadways that do not meet applicable roadway standards. Sites that are within the floodway or sites that contain limited access to public services. It's R5 zoning is what's required if you have a rural residential comp plan area that doesn't meet the criteria above or that is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. So the applicant in this case has requested a zoning designation of rural 5. Rural zoning, either R10 or R5 requires the land use designation of rural residential to be applied to the land in question. As we previously saw, the site has no features that make it incompatible with the rural residential designation. So there appears to be no reason to deny the applicant the request to redesignate this site as rural res. Since the site in question is compatible with the rural residential land use designation, it follows that either R10 or R5 zoning should be applied to the site as appropriate. So as far as R10 goes, the site is of course not characterized by slopes steeper than 30%. The site is not located within critical wildlife habitat. The site does contain primag soils. The site is served by Spirit Lake Cut Off, which is a secondary arterial that is county owned and maintained. The site is not within the floodway. The site is served by Spirit Lake Fire, Avista, Bonner School District 83, Bonner County Ambulance District, and so does not contain limited access to public services. Per BRCRC 12-323, a rural residential designated site should be zoned R10 if it meets one of the criteria above. Unless, as per BRCRC 12-323B2, the site in question is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. This is a two path test and you only have to go through one path to get to R5. It's not required that you go through both paths in order to reach R5 just one. So to the immediate northeast of the site in question is a subdivided area of 50 parcels that we're going to see here in a minute. Forty-eight of these 50 parcels are less than 10 acres in size and could only be created under current zoning code in areas zoned as R5 or smaller. Thirty-five of these 50 parcels are seven and a half acres or less. That is they're near to five then to 10 acres. In other words, the site in question is already in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. Forty-eight out of 50 of these adjacent parcels would require R5 zoning or smaller to be created under current zoning code. So this feature alone is enough to clarify that the appropriate zoning for this property is rural 5, not rural 10, per BRCRC 12-323B2. On the screen there in yellow is the area in question that we're talking about today for the rezoning comp plan designation change. And in blue are the 50 parcels that were being discussed that are immediately next to the area in question. So a couple of important additions, because this has been coming up in hearings that I just want to cover here. First is that the comprehensive plan does not contradict itself. It is one whole document adopted in the whole to be taken in whole. The land use designations that we reviewed here today that are found in the land use section of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan were created to be consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The land use designation standards were reviewed by staff in the staff report and in this presentation. Next, per BRCRC 12-111. Bonner County Revised Code is consistent with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, and I'll just go ahead and read the portion of code into the record. The zoning regulations in districts for the unincorporated areas of Bonner County, as herein established, have been made in accordance with a comprehensive plan and Idaho code for the purposes of promoting the health, safety and general welfare of the people of Bonner County. And of course, as you saw, the applicable zoning code standards were reviewed by staff in the staff report and in this presentation. So in summary and conclusion here, a review of the land use section of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan reveals that the characteristics of the area in question are not consistent with the current land use designation of Ag Forest land. This review of the land use section of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan further reveals that the characteristics of the area in question are consistent with the land use designation of rural residential. This area therefore should be designated as rural residential. Since the land use designation of rural residential is appropriate for this property, this leaves zoning choices of either rural 10 or rural 5 as appropriate for this property. As previously shown, the site in question is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. The density in this geographic area requires that this site be rezoned to rural 5 per BRCRC 12-323B2. Staff therefore recommends approval of the request for a comprehensive plan map amendment from Ag Forest 1020 to rural residential and a zone change from Ag Forest 10 to rural 5. That concludes my presentation. Were there any questions?
Thank you, Jason. Any questions, the staff?
From the commission.
This is not okay.
Jason, this is Commissioner Frankenbaum. Did you review the characteristics of this parcel against the criteria in the comp plan for prime Ag Forest land?
I reviewed it against the land use portion of the comprehensive plan because this is a land use comp plan amendment proposal. I reviewed it against the land use section.
Including the prime Ag Forest designation?
The land use portion of the comprehensive plan, as I stated, is consistent with everything else in the comprehensive plan.
Still haven't heard an answer to my question.
Yes, by definition, I cannot review against the land use portion without reviewing against the entirety of the comprehensive plan, including the portion that you're talking about.
Commissioner Reed, I have a question, please. Can you tell me where, where the soil samples or the soil data is gathered from?
The soil data comes from the Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, which is a division of the US Department of Agriculture.
And are those done from areas or are those done from specific samples throughout the area?
I'm sure they're done through a variety of methods, but the NRCS is the most authoritative source that we have available.
Thank you.
So Jason, this is Mr. Davis. Couple of things. You mentioned that, and it's shown on the aerial showing the property and the surrounding properties and all of the residences and so forth, and you said there was a number of them. I don't know what the number was, but the parcels are five acres or less.
Parcels, the parcels are under 10 acres, meaning that they could not be created under any current zoning designation that we have except rural 5 or smaller. The parcels themselves aren't always smaller than five acres.
Right. So you have a broad idea or any idea when those parcels were created?
They were created well before our current comprehensive plan.
That's correct. So looking at history and another thing. Yeah, the zoning code Title 12 says that it was put together consistent with the comprehensive plan. You may not have it in front of you, but 12322B Agriculture and Forestry District, we're in the zoning code now. The use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated by the comprehensive plan as followed, AF20, number one, AF20, and all areas designated as prime Ag Forest land in the comprehensive plan. And yet we have the comprehensive plan saying that Ag Forest is not appropriate with prime soils.
That is correct.
Yeah, you got direct disconnect with consistency. Reading through the Ag Forest 20 description in the zoning code, it really appears to me that this property and all the surrounding areas should be AF20, AF20. Not the AF10. The other part is when the comprehensive plan map and designations were done in 2004 or 2005, those descriptions were there, the designations were there, the descriptions were there. Zoning didn't come in for another two years or three years. So the map was made up and it called this area AF10, Ag Forest. There had to be reasons that it was designated Ag Forest. It wasn't just I mean, there were countless hours spent determining what the area should be and a lot of public input, a lot of landowner input. And this area was designated as Ag Forest. Sometime later, when the zoning code went in, this area was designated Ag Forest 10. Not 20, for some reason. It better, in my mind, it better fits 20 than 10. For a lot of reason, mainly because of Ag Forest, which is what the what the Ag Forest Zone District is about. But so it's, I think the history shows where this area was not zoned prior to 1980. And zoning came in and then in the 78 comp plan, most everything was five acres. Then the evidence through the next 15 years was that's probably not the best idea. So let's change the zoning. The comp plan was totally thrown out and replaced in 2004 and zoning was put in place in 2008. With the evidence that the past didn't do the area any favors. So it was, it was zoned differently and comp plan designation different. Not seeing at this point a compelling reason to change it. No, we're not. We're just making statements.
Do you have a question, the staff? Okay, with the project representative, Mr. Green, come up, please. Name and address for the file, sir.
Commissioner, this is Jeremy Graham. Order of whispering, planning, San Point, Idaho, addresses supporting. His request to these zones property and to change the comp plan and inspire up here. Excellent. Okay. Thanks. Thanks for your time tonight. You guys have been working overtime. Impressive amount of people and what people saw. Trying to keep this one pretty clear and simplistic. Because I think it is pretty clear and simplistic. Of course, as was mentioned, this is a quasi judicial. Of course, as was mentioned, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so you're acting as a jury between chicken and here all evidence and testimony before you bind before you come up with a tangible decision. You are a jury and due process and prostitution govern this procedure and my client has the right to keep her standing crucially based on the facts and the so a little background must be known. In professional planning for almost twenty years, foreign planning, community development director for the city of Sandpoint, great years and currently owner of Wisterup and we work on these sorts of projects all over the west and in this area. So tonight we're going to talk about the facts of the property, we're going to talk about Idaho code, state code, Bonner County code. Going to talk about some of the proximity questions that were raised, talk about the rural character. Going to talk about the soil, because I know that's been an issue and question that's come up, and talk about open space. We talked briefly about the Bonner County economy and finally about some concerns. Area residents and neighbors had it on track. So the first thing, I need to go over some facts here for the record. This is a request for a comp plan map amendment from Ag Force ten to rural residential. A zone change from Ag Force ten to rural five. This is a rehearing. P and C originally denied this request. It was sent to Bonner County, the board of county commissioners, where it was approved, it was appealed by the neighbors and surrounding landowners and others. During that appeal, there were some irregularities related to mailings to legacies and we have a new world hearing at two o'clock. The property is a hundred and sixty acres. Currently, potential lots have approved through the subdivision process would allow sixteen lots to be developed on this property. If this comp plan amendment and zone change were approved tonight, that would double that to under the R five residential, rural residential, zoning to thirty-two. So we're talking about a net change of sixteen potential lots or sixteen lot density. This is not the process for the application to subdivide. This is five acre parcels and for comp plan zoning requests are approved through the subdivision process, govern the splitting of the parcel and the five acre larger lots. The subdivision and moving location permit process will address concerns regarding sanctuary service, road layout, traffic and other improvements to storm. Access to the site, spirit lane cutoff provided by, that's the access to the property. It's a secondary arterial and it's paved, compact asphalt and it's a county home and then can be grown. Services, there are no water services at this time. Wells would be required. There's no sewer service at this time. Septic systems would be required. Fire services provided by Spirit Lake Fire, powered by Vista, school district is Bonner County, number eighty-three, Evans District, Bonner County Evans District. The standards for review for this application is per Bonner County improvised code twelve to fifteen and according to staff, the application is considered complete and routed to E D C supported. So what's being requested for consideration? First, the comprehensive land use map amendment that I have forced to have rural residential and then the zone change, as I mentioned. Idaho code, as you're quite aware, provides every government board the ability to adopt and amend or repeal, of course, various standards, it's their comp plan and their zoning. And the key thing here is the zoning districts shall be in accordance with the policy set forward to adopt the comprehensive plan. Accordance, it doesn't mean that it's has to be identical. It means that it's not in conflict and that is an interpretation and that's your job to interpret whether this application is in accordance with the comp plan. And speaking of the comp plan, chapter fourteen, page eight, this statement says there currently is more agricultural land than necessary to the market demands in Bonner County. Further, the comp plan talks about objectives and policies and goals. Current zoning districts should be evaluated to determine changes to density and zoning requirements could encourage small acreage farming or small scale agricultural operations. Further, there is an opportunity to include regulations that promote agriculture, especially small acreage farming. That's what we're talking about tonight, some of those regulations and these changes that would certainly rural residential five activities. Further in the plan, the planning department staff and commissioners should review county land use law zoning districts to broaden housing choices for rural housing development and sustainable design. Page thirty-eight, the housing component. As the community continues to grow, there will be added challenges to find suitable, developable land while balancing the various goals and objectives of comprehensive plan. Clearly, each situation is unique. Nothing's black and white and the comp plan acknowledges that there are going to be these balancing matters. Looking at the existing comprehensive plan designation, ag forest land, but a pull from the staff report is, in my opinion, they do an excellent job and accurately described the situation. Just want to emphasize this sentence in the staff report, this site does not appear suited to the comprehensive plan designation of ag forest land, as it's missing almost every criteria for this designation. The rural residential requested comp plan designation from the staff report. This site has no features that may get incompatible with rural residential land designation and there appears to be no reason to deny the applicant's request to designate the site as rural residential. The existing zoning designation, ag forest. Again, according from the staff report, this site does not appear suited to the comprehensive plan designation of ag forest land. It's missing almost every criteria for this designation because because the site is not appropriate to be designated as ag forest land, it follows that the site is not appropriate for a main zone, ag forest ten. The requested zoning designation, rural five land. The site has no features that may get incompatible with the rural residential land designation. Since the land in question is compatible with the rural residential land designation, it follows that either R ten or R ride zones should be applied to the site as appropriate. Further, it's confirmed that the site is served by Spirit Lake Fire, Vista, Bonner, that's which is K three in the Evans District and does not contain limited access to public services. As we heard from our county rise code twelve, three, two, three, rural residential designation should be zoned R ten, it's one of one or more of the criteria above unless per twelve, three, twenty-three, two, the site in question is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling per five acre density. And to some comments I've made earlier, it's not specific on when those area developments, proximity were developed. It doesn't say if they were developed after the zoning was installed. It doesn't say if they're developed pre nineteen eighty. It just says quite clearly when the site in question is in an area already developed. So it's quite clear, it's really immaterial when the five acre development, the north east of this parcel was created. Finally, Idaho code title sixty-three, six, oh, four really talks about what's contiguous, because that came up during one of the previous hearings. And that is defined in sixty-three, six, oh, four. And contiguous means being in actual contact or touching a log, boundary, or a quant. There's some question where that intersection adjacent to the northeast corner of the subject parcel was contiguous and quite clear where it is. So thirty-five parcels in the vicinity, many of them are contiguous, are already developed at or near the one dwelling for five acre density, as the Bonner County revised code twelve, three, two. As staff pointed out in staff report, it's contiguous. The lots that have been developed in proximity to the subject parcel, forty-eight of these fifty are less than ten acres in size. So there's concern about the rural character of the community. Well, per the Bonner County comprehensive plan and Idaho code, farmers are allowed to claim certain exemptions. And it doesn't say you have to be a farmer of ten acres, twenty acres, fifty acres. It says in order to qualify for such exemption, there must be five acres or more and under one ownership, producing agricultural field, crops, nursery, stocks, grazing, or in croftland retirement or in location programs part of the agricultural enterprise. So clearly, even Idaho code recognizes that a five acre parcel is rural and allows farming. But there's some question about that. In fact, even in the comprehensive plan, even in the agricultural community of Bonner County, according to the comp plan, chapter five, one, there was testimony in two thousand five from the public, from the agricultural community, that included concerns that a ten acre minimum are too small for a viable agricultural pursuit. And then another paragraph now down, they say, the ten acre parcels are too small to produce enough viable economic agricultural operations. They are too small, too far. So I'm confused why we're even talking about this because if ten acres is too small and five acres is defined as a farm in Idaho code, what are we really talking about? This is a rural residential request that allows farming. Talking about the soils, a lot of conversation about the soils and I've done some research on this. This is the soil maps from the web soil survey that was mentioned by staff, which is available online. You'll see the delineation there, the subject property, the southern portion of the subject property. In fact, the majority of the subject parcel is identified as soil title forty-five, rachid, Bonner, actually silvones. That eastern portion, there's a little more of that, which is cootley, rachid, ash and silvone. And those are identified as prime, prime land if irrigated. I've got a connection in circles spinning here, so I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, back to where we were, prime ag soils. So yes, twenty-three cootley, rachid, ash and silvone are prime farmland if irrigated. The majority of the property, as I mentioned, is soil unit forty-five, rachid, Bonner, silvone. The Bonner County comp plan calls this prime farmland class three if irrigated. Class four, if non-irrigated. Of course, there is no irrigation district, public or private, so this parcel. Class four soils per Bonner County comp plan are defined as soils and soils that have very severe limitations that reduce the choice of plants or that require very careful management or both. Without irrigation, these are class four soils. Examination of chapter three of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, section three, one, two, non-prime farmland, shows class four or higher soils are not prime farmland. Further, and this is the most important piece that I found in Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. The following maps, table three, one, which are all list all the farm, the soil classes be the requirements for prime farmland when irrigated and where the slope is less than six percent. The emphasis is, this list does not constitute a recommendation for a particular land use. Therefore, this prime ag soil component and this facade that this is a barrier to implementing other consistent parts of the comp plan, it just isn't true. Your own comp plan says the list does not constitute a recommendation for particular land use. In fact, there's other prime soils throughout Bonner County. There's a lot of them, actually. There's some just west of ninety-five and Sable that are prime ag farmland soils that have been developed at much higher densities. Again, I just want to point to the site here. The star represents the approximate area of the site. To the west of the site, there's rural open space that are both combination of public and conservation land, over twelve thousand contiguous acres. To the east of this property, again, there's over twelve thousand contiguous acres of preserved, restricted or publicly owned land. And this is actually a highlight parcel by parcel. With the subject parcel in the middle, it's in proximity to rural public open land owned by the state of Idaho. And again, as you can see, changing and adding sixteen additional lots on this property certainly in my mind will not impact the rural character of the area. In contrast, you remember the last few weeks before you were looking at a zone change in Sally Valley on the corner of Rapid Lightning, highlighted red here, where there's far fewer areas of public land and open space. Something like this may impact the rural character. Again, there's a ton of open space in proximity to this subject parcel. Briefly, job growth and demand for housing in two thousand and I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand eighteen, Bonner County added over thirty-three hundred new jobs. Right? And the majority of those were not involved in timber and ag. So I think we all understand that today's world, people work from home. There's a whole bunch of new economic options for people living in Bonner County. People are attracted to Bonner County and those people need places to live. There were some current concerns about traffic. First and foremost, the site in question is approximately fifteen minutes from Priest River, twenty-five minutes from Sandpoint, thirty-five minutes from Ponderay. It's also accessible to Hayden and areas to the south, making it really in the epicenter of a huge chat for all municipalities in our area. Based on the National Household Travel Survey, daily vehicle trips per household in two thousand seventeen were about five point one one. So at the allowed sixteen lots, we're talking about eighty-one probable trips per day resulting from these homes. If the zone change and future subdivision were to proceed, if thirty-two lots, we'd be talking about a hundred and sixteen trips per day, so an eighty-two trip difference. This is some traffic count data from about one point six eight miles from the subject property. The average daily traffic count is one thousand five hundred vehicles. So one thousand five hundred vehicles, if we increase this and this zone change and comp plan amendment were to proceed and Mr. Dahmer subdivided, we're talking about eighty-one additional trips. Eighty-one additional trips divided by fifteen hundred, we're talking about five points more than three percent increase in EBT. So closing comments, the requested changes won't destroy the rural character of the area. It's subjective and you know, people have their interpretation. That's our presentation. The conversion of some prime agricultural soils is not in confluence with the comprehensive plan. Approval will support home builders and provide housing for a growing sector of the Bonner County economy. The tax revenue per acre will increase to address new service demands in the area. The subdivision process will address on and off-site concerns. Subject parcel is well suited for development. There are no wetlands. The slopes are agreeable. It has access to the hard surface road. And finally, staff finds the request is consistent with the land features. Allowing the comp plan map amendment change from ag forest land to rural residential would allow for community growth. For the population component of the comprehensive plan, multi-generational, multi-economic diversity is desired. And shall be encouraged within Bonner County. This proposal would help to fulfill that. School facilities and transportation, full consideration shall be given to the county's ability to provide quality education. To current and future students of Bonner County. We've heard no comments from the school district. Economic development, Bonner County shall encourage economic diversity to financial health of the community. And then maintenance of its rural atmosphere. This proposal would certainly allow for greater diversification and residents to live in the area, helping its financial health. Under land use, the comp plan is clear, you need to balance and all these needs. But it does encourage the community to grow. Natural resources, the comp plan understands that this is a neat place to live. We recognize that as well. And certainly that soils present on the site, market price or limited development that we're proposing. And finally, housing, Bonner County recognizes the first housing needs are to be addressed to provide adequate shelter for all. Regardless of age, income or physical abilities, and this proposal will certainly facilitate that goal. So commissioners, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have regarding this request.
Any questions for Mr. Grimm?
Commissioner Reeves, I do, this started as a hundred and eighty or a hundred and sixty acre parcel. And then proposed subdividing, why wasn't it created? Subdivision proposed, why wasn't it created to go along with the zoning at that time?
I'm understanding the question. Why wasn't a subdivision application put together with this zone change?
Why wasn't it in compliance? Why wasn't it surveyed and set up to be in compliance with the current comprehensive plan? And with the current zoning?
Yeah, you know, when the zoning was adopted, when the comp plan, second question, when the comp plan zoning was adopted.
And zoning, yeah.
Well, as you saw in the application, comprehensive plans are considered a watercolor. They are fuzzy purposely, the boundaries between zones, the areas between zones. It's almost impossible to think that the county or yourselves go out of an inventory. Every acre of land and know everything about them. So the comp plan is a guidance document. The zoning follows from the comp plan. And zoning establishes, of course, the restrictions on open area use. So my question is, I guess my answer is, I didn't adopt the comp plan. I wasn't part of this comp plan designation that was given. It was by a permission account. And there was guidance and language in the comp plan that helped them to identify those parcels.
Correct. And we're all aware of the zoning in the comp plan. When things like this come before, that's one of the first things that I'm sure most people think of. Why wasn't it designed in compliance?
I'll tell you, it's quite frequent to have a comp plan changes and zone changes at birth. They are, the comp plan is a dynamic document. It's not static. It's supposed to be updated about every seven to ten years. And it's updated because it takes account to the changing dynamics and economics of the world.
So economically feasible for the developer and that's the way it was designed instead of being in keeping with what was existing there. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicants representative? Jeremy is the applicant here. See if you wish to speak.
I wouldn't know. I have to bet Mr. Dahmer.
Okay, thank you. All right. So seeing that we're done with Jeremy. Seeing that we're done with Jeremy for a little bit, we're going to move to public comment. And what we'll do is we'll go to online first. So public comment, you got to state your name and address for the record, please. You're limited to three minutes. Somebody in the audience can give you their three minutes for a total of six. And I'm going to state this again, if you go after anybody, you're going to be asked to leave the building, okay? This is a public hearing, okay? We're not here to go after anybody. Okay, so saying that, let's go to the first person online, please.
Hello? You can hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I actually am going to yield my time to Dave Bowman. But before I leave, I just want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know that you guys have a tough job. This is a volunteer position. And I know that a tremendous amount of time goes into what you do. And I just want to make sure that you know that I appreciate you and I know a whole lot of other people appreciate you as well. So I just want to make sure that that is said, you guys are operating with grace under fire and I just wanted to thank you. I yield my time to Dave Bowman.
Hi, Dave, you're on.
Okay, I'm here. Do you hear me okay? You hear me? Okay, yeah, Dave Bowman, Selly Valley, and I want to echo what Susan said. I know you guys have a tough job and I don't think everybody knows that you're volunteers. So I just want to echo what she said and we do thank you because it's a tough job and it's getting tougher all the time. So with that, I'll move on. I'm not sure where to start here. There's a lot to work with, but I'll start with the comp plan amendment. So the applicant opened their argument for the comp plan amendment and he said it again tonight. By explaining that the comp plan is, in their words, quote, "a watercolor, a fuzzy layout of potential land uses." Well, from where I see it, by making that statement alone, and that's all you really need to look at. They've given you all the reasons you need to recommend denial because the comp plan map is supposed to be fuzzy, right? It's not down to the parcel. So the land use element of the comp plan states, and it really, it shouldn't even need explaining because it's elementary. The descriptions of the land uses are intended to be general in nature. The features included in each description, they cannot, they will not be found in every single parcel in a given land use category. They aren't expected to be. General characteristics representative of the features found generally in a given geographical area of the county. Features called on ag forest are in fact common in the Houdoo Valley in general. Whether or not each and every one applies to each and every parcel. If every single parcel, sorry about that, was considered individually a land use map, it would just look like a checkerboard. And that would just defeat the whole purpose of even having a land use map. It's intended to be general. Okay, move on to the zone change. And before I get to what I was going to say, I was shocked to hear staff and applicant tonight both say. That twelve dash three two three requires a site to be rehomed for, per twelve dash three two three. It doesn't. I'll quote right from three two three. It says, "The rural district is established to allow low-density residential animals with robo pursuits." The purpose can be accomplished by, and then they list out the thing, nowhere in there does it say anything about, there's nothing required. Nothing in chapter three requires anything. They're descriptions. So this is not an application for a zoning change, a zoning code change, but it's a map amendment. This is significant because the code doesn't call out a specific procedure to change a zoning map. It just has a general procedure for any change and all of those procedures are laid out in chapter two. There's not a one in chapter three. So I'll start. I'm going to remind you like I do at every single hearing for density increase. Twelve dash two eleven states that the application must state in writing why the change is necessary. And this application doesn't even come close to clearing that hurdle. I'm going to leave that to other, I'm sure other people will go into that in detail. So I'm going to move on. Twelve dash two one six, this is the entirety, this is what you're supposed to use to evaluate proposals. And I quote, "Staff and governing bodies shall review the particular facts, circumstances of each proposal submitted. And shall determine whether there's adequate evidence that the proposal is accordance with. The general specific objective of the comprehensive plan." Nowhere in there does it point anyone to chapter three. So according to that, it is not twelve dash three two one to three two nine, which is what's called out in the application. And the staff report, chapter two is the entire set of laws and they are laws, not suggestions. That deal with how staff and governing body are to evaluate an application. Nothing outside of chapter two applies to evaluating, yet staff and applicant both. Twelve dash three two one to three two nine as their rationale for changing the zoning map. There's no nuance here. Neither applicant nor staff are following what the law dictates. Spot zoning, this is clear. Idaho Supreme Court has said type two spot zoning refers to a zone change. It singles out a parcel of land for use inconsistent with the prohibited use in the rest of the zoning district. For the benefit of an individual property owner. Folks, it doesn't get any more clearer than that. This type of spot zoning is invalid. That's from the Supreme Court, Idaho Supreme Court. I'm just going to throw out one last thing here. The first staff report from P and Z, I'm sorry, for P and Z, recommended denial. And P and Z, with no change in fact, the staff report mysteriously was amended for approval before it got to the BLCC. At that hearing, I asked the staff to please explain why the report was revised from denial to approval. And what I got, I was going to quote it tonight, but I adjusted things per what was said, so I won't have time. It was a word salad. There was no good explanation for revising that from denial to approval. It just, just happened. And so I guess that's all I have. So for the reasons that I've just stated and more that I won't bore you with, but I'm sure other people will. I'm going to ask that you recommend denial. So that's all I have. Thanks again for your time.
Mr. Bowman, your address, please, for the record.
Sorry, three zero seven seven North Cootney Road.
Thank you. Next up.
Hello, my name's Arlen Robb. I live at eight one seven Chippendale Lane. My property borders the project site. I'd like to reference that both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Grimm provided inaccurate information. On the, provided on the slideshow saying that a Vista power provides power to the project. It is not. Northern Lights provides power out in this area. So bad information promotes bad decisions and who knows what other bad information they're promoting. Also, Mr. Johnson did not want to address the project site as a subdivision. But Mr. Grimm did address on his information as the project as a subdivision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Susan, you're muted on your end.
All right, are you able to hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Mike Martin, seven five Judy Lane, Priest River. Oh, out in Hoodoo Valley. One of the comments that was made by Jeremy was that there was going to be affordable housing. I'd like to know how many affordable housing out of the sixteen or the thirty-two are going to be. It's funny that in the previous ones, he's brought up the amount of water produced by wells. This time he, and they were all old reports, he didn't bring that up. Priest River and Old Town Subcommittee created or did their presentation to you folks. As far as I know, you folks still haven't seen that or any of the other areas to be able to look at it for comp plans. Does the community wish to have the growth out there, which I can tell you in my opinion, no, they do not. You know, environmental factors, Jeremy was talking about that our soil out there. Trying to find my notes real quick on it. He said that it has to be irrigated. And he was saying that we were under the. Too many pages of notes. But anyways, we're not just the rathrum, sandy loam and all. The three different types of soil out there are there and only one of them says that irrigation is needed. I don't think anybody out here would have a problem if it stayed ag forest and it was ten acre parcels. I do think that everybody out here would have a problem if it was rural ten. Or the commissioners decided to make it rural five. This is a community out here. We have a grange. It's a farming community. And adding all those homes and all, yes, society has changed. I'm the neighborhood watch captain and I have noticed along with many of my neighbors, the increase in prime and all that we've had out here. So I mean, there are concerns. Spirit Lake Cut Off Road, if you guys go out there tonight and drive that road. You're going to find that going down the hill to get to Duford, you're going to slide right through the stop sign. And either into a vehicle or going down a slight incline. Because that road is not designed for traffic and you bring in thirty new homes. I do wish to thank all of you for your time. I know you're volunteering. I know the roads are bad. Notice that there's not a lot of people in attendance and I would say that's primarily why we aren't there is because. So anyway, thank you for your patience and thank you for all that you folks have been doing. I do ask that you say no to it. Thank you.
Kristen? You're muted on your end.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Christine Lo. I'm at Two Running Vista Drive in Blanchard, Idaho. And I too oppose this proposal. One of my main concerns being the traffic that comes, is, would be added to the area. Spirit Lake Cut Off is definitely not, not built for a high traffic volume. Such as adding in thirty-two homes, which on the average would have what, three, three vehicles approximately. Not to mention the water, you know, there's a lot of people that have talked about wells and whatnot being done. There should be some extensive surveys or extensive testing to see how this is going to affect the wells that are already out there. There shouldn't be any problem with the ten acre, the ten acre parcels. You know, this, it just keeps getting drawn out and drug around. It should just be left at ten acre parcels. It fits a comprehensive plan and. It fits a comprehensive plan and it, it fits the community. That's all I have to say.
We have our Cameron.
Hi, can you hear me? Great, um, my name is Carmen Correto, and I'm at eighty-eight Hawks Ridge Lane in Priest River. And, um, I also wanted to, um, I'm not there because of the weather, it's bad, we barely made it home. Um, and, um, I, I also am hoping that the zoning committee will decline this and leave the property at the zoning that it is and at the ten acres, um, minimum. And, uh, because DOM construction can totally build on six, uh, on sixteen, ten acre parcels. Nobody in the area that I have talked to is complaining about that at all. Um, and if, uh, you know, later down the line, the people who are buying would like to switch it back, you know, to five acre parcels for family or however they want to do, then they should have a right to do that, not have that right taken away from them before they ever even buy. Um, and, um, this, uh, even though their, um, DOM constructions representative is trying to make it sound like, oh, this is a necessary development. It's not a necessary development in this agricultural area. It's, uh, the people that are buying in this agricultural area are looking for agricultural pursuits. Um, and, you know, that many neighbors, um, it, it, it isn't going to help. And, uh, the current community members in the Hoodoo Valley, they're not asking or encouraging for the community to grow. Only DOM construction is doing that. Most of the property, the current property owners bought specifically to live there, knowing that that's the kind of area they were buying into. And changing this to rural, um, instead of ag forest, totally, uh, you know, starts a different ball rolling. Um, so, um, and then I'm, um, from twelve dash two one one E. It said, um, to encourage the protection of prime agricultural. This land is prime agricultural soil, and it can be used for farming. And it was used for forestries by DOM construction. They've already harvested all the trees pretty much. Um, and so, and then it seems to me that the definition somehow in there, it's either misunderstood or something. Because common sense tells us that, okay, um, this, this land ag forest is correct to me. This a hundred sixty acre parcel is pretty much level, which means that it's okay to use to farm. Like there's no farms on steeper slopes, but on steep slopes, there's forests. So that makes sense. It's like, you know. Oh, time's up. Okay, so basically, um, the one last thing is, I don't know if anybody's mentioned water, but we had problems with our well this, uh, summer. We actually didn't have barely any water for six weeks. And, uh, so that was not happy. So they're going to have problems with water.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on and do public comment in the room here. We're going to start in the front row. I'm going to finish what I'm saying. We're going to start in the front row and then we'll take Mr. Gunner on the telephone. So if you agree to stand up, state your name, address. And I, I know, Don, just hang on, and, and, and agree with what's going on. And that way we can get out of here earlier. Okay, so let's take Mr. Gunner.
Suzanne says she's got something she had needs to ask too, so. However, you want to fit that in.
Uh, take Suzanne first.
You're muted on your end.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I live at six fifty-one Chippendale Lane, and I about right up against DOM's property. And I would like to yield my three minutes to Maureen Patterson.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, we'll try to say somebody. How about that? Hi, Douglas.
Go ahead, Doug.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Doug Gunner, two three one Sagel Road. Um, the applicant's main argument is that there's an R five-like subdivision in the northeast corner of the subject property. And I want to thank you, Don, for immediately calling that, uh, that out. That development was put in a long time prior to the, to the current comp plan. Uh, we don't know what the kind of soils are on that property. We don't know what the comp plan said during that time that that was developed, and that's if there even was one. We don't know anything about that property, so that argument, in my opinion, needs to be thrown out. Uh, the current comp plan that was created by the people of Bonner County mapped this as a ten acre minimum area for a number of reasons. The sub-area committee that our Bonner County Commissioners created, uh, are against this rezone. Fishing game is against this, and the neighbors are against this. Uh, this developer bought the property knowing the current zoning. Uh, if we continue to allow developers to come in and make these changes, we will be setting a precedence that anyone can just come in, ask for a change and get it, which is already, uh, happening. That will absolutely destroy our rural character and undermine our comprehensive plan. This property only owner can still make a pretty penny on the sixteen lots that they can legally go to, because this will not be affordable housing. Uh, we know that this will be a subdivision as the excavation and roadwork is already well underway. Uh, we all understand progress, and progress in this case is ten acres. Five acres would be destruction. Uh, I ask that you please rise in this request, and I want to thank you, uh, P D.
Thank you.
Hello, Teresa Heisner, thirty-one fifty-five Peninsula Road, Priest River. I would like to recommend, uh, disapproval of this project, as I have in the past, many reasons. But traffic is number one concern for most of us in this area. These little kids cannot handle this type of traffic. Uh, the two thousand and nineteen traffic study example he presented is completely inaccurate and misleading. We all know, and I'm a real estate agent, that this area has exploded over the course of the last two years, uh, which in turn is limiting our resources, whether it be water, law enforcement. Uh, we just can't handle the growth. And as others had said, this does undermine our zoning map and comprehensive plan and does set the precedent for other developers to think it's okay to come in here and pair up our natural resources and our rural character. That's all I have to say, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else online that would like to make a comment? Just raise your hand now.
I think we're good. Okay, so we're going to start with you on the far end. Stand up, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Trisha Bowman, and I live at three six seven Berry Creek. I actually live on the road from my suburb, but I'm in my studio this year, and the houses are eight hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know how this subdivision is even going to be affordable. I live about fifteen minutes from this subdivision. There's just lots of traffic, and I know our well will be controlled this summer. We should change the laws. We'd get exceptionally five, because it's pushing the farmers right across the road. And then the farmers, why do I stop paying when I saw this land? And then there's another giant subdivision. Process, which I all my life been. On the very first, it's one subdivision, and it's another, another. Nice.
Thank you.
My name's Wendy Rayly, I live at one fifty-one Chippendale Road. I'd like to give my minutes to Dr. Patterson.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Rogers Barley, ninety-six seventy-one. I don't have enough time to go over it all, but Mr. Davis, Cheryl did a good job of a lot of things I wanted to say. And the attorney here did a good job, or excuse me, your consultant, did a good job picking apart, picking apart several parts of our comprehensive plan to make this, you guys say yes. I wouldn't sit in your position and compete. Is this going to open the floodgates or continue to open the floodgates? Especially with this contiguous, uh, housing around it. Because if you took, if you look at a good overview of what we have in the county right now, every time from now on, you're going to have contiguous housing. Your job will be a lot easier because of maybe the precedent that gets set tonight or in the future. So, you know, I, like I said, I think we need to think about the future too. And if you were right, that the comprehensive plan is a, is a dynamic, it's a dynamic. Then it's time we take a look and change the comprehensive plan. That's it, thanks, guys.
Okay, we'll go down this row. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, ma'am.
That's okay. Asia Williams, two nine seven, Chippendale, Idaho. There's conflicting information coming out of the county. This year, Commissioner McDonald came to Blanchard to talk about that specific location and the inaccessibility of emergency services, to try and pitch that we house an emergency service right off of that road because of the way the, the distance of travel for emergency services. So you're going to put more housing in when that situation hasn't been resolved at all. And it's right, it's actually on the same road. He wanted to make a deal with Chan for building right there for emergency services. And so that's important when you're talking about increasing that footprint. I think the staff report didn't, they didn't receive the fishing, uh, game report.
It did.
Uh, before they wrote. And if they, if they received it before they wrote it, then they underutilized it because that report actually clearly, clearly says that the development, uh, their request does impact the footprint. It does reduce the rural nature, and it does actually hurt wildlife because it says that in that report, it talks about wildlife that'll have difficulty regrowing and developing once it's disturbed. And that was underutilized in the staff report, and that's a big deal. And I think we have to take that report in its entirety, as well as the ongoing issue of water in our area. So not just, not just traffic, but emergency services, a big deal in our area. So I recommend that you can now and keep it the way that it is, and you can develop or choose to move on.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Sandy Sparling, nine six seven one, youth of Broke, Priest River. Um, I also would like to see this, uh, denied. I agree with, um, Cheryl Reeve, who said, uh, you know, this was the way the zoning was. They come in and now they know when they bought what it was and coming and changing. And I see this as something that we're going to see over and over and over again. By allowing this to go forward, I feel very strongly, this will set a precedence. And the word will be out to every developer from everywhere around. Come on in, buy the property, oh yeah, Bonner, good old Bonner County will just hold on and give you what you want. And I see that as being a major issue. The other thing is my husband said, the minute I saw the word contiguous up there, I said, open the floodgates, baby, sure they come. Because you've got development here for five, and now we say, oh, but you write, well, over there, five, five, make it five, here we go. It's set in gold. So I really strongly encourage you to deny this. And the other thing that's been stated is water. I know, um, the Hoodoo Valley had several wells go dry this summer. Yes, it was extremely hot summer, but there were several people with wells. I know what is, somebody had just bought a house for about eight hundred thousand dollars and moved in about two months later, the well was dry. How exciting. And I also, we, these are a hundred thousand dollar homes, folks. We're going to start at probably eight hundred thousand and so we're talking, um, affordable. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go down this row here. We could, we could, you want to, you like the parcel map up, sir? And we could probably do that. So let's pick somebody else up to, to, to speak while we're bringing the parcel map up. You folks here would like to say something?
Sure, I'd like to.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Garrett Gordon, I'm at the twelve oh eight First Street, Sandpoint, and property on three twenty-eight Chippendale. Uh, very near the property in question. I am against this, uh, bad decision. And I agree with many of the points, brought it before, but to not be repetitious, I'd like to say that if it's not really ag bar tree, what is it? What is that for a hundred acres of Idaho ag forest right there? The prime director of the Idaho Department of Land is to grow a crop of trees there to support the school system, which is rather underfunded. And timber and agriculture is a large part of that valley, and it's a large part of my life because I own a farm out there. And I also have, kind of don't live out there, I have a large number of ungulates that over winter were stayed on my property on the way to the Hoodoo Creek, which is, uh, it's basically like a wetland. I spent the last year of my life working construction in, uh, Whitefish, Montana, and very expensive weekend house. It's about a quarter billion dollars and living in Whitefish through the year and being back here and seeing development. Um, as it's being currently guided, like in this meeting, I see two very different paths where Whitefish has chosen to tightly work straight, the development of the city and the county and the greenways and the areas around it. And it's attracted a very, they're attracted a lot of money for themselves on a tax base and recreation. And it's a very desirable place to live. There's numerous billionaires and people like myself who work construction can go there and instantly get a job and make good money. And there's a lack of housing. And putting housing out here in this area will not help the housing crisis in the area. Um, we all live out there, we know what it's like. I dare that guy to go drive back over to that job site in twenty-five minutes tonight in snow, see how well that works. I was told by a county commissioner that the important thing in these sort of situations is follow the law. And I feel like the law is the plan, and the land is ag forest, three ten and twenty. DOM is not here, although I really want to stand up and say that I was down, but I can't do that. He bought tins, he's got tins.
Thank you.
I'm being told that no one can hear us online in the audience, that people go up front, the lights are better right up there.
Okay, go ahead, sir. So, uh, she's, she's going to go first and then we'll hit this row here. Go ahead, ma'am. Yeah, you're, you're all good. No, you're all good.
My name's Maya Sarbry, and you're at Slight. I live in the same buildings that Edas, twelve oh one First Street, and we have concrete twenty acres on three twenty, Chippendale Lane. Um, okay, so I want to point out that this is the only piece of property, and it's owned by one person. It's not, we're not counting this whole thing, right? It's just this one property, it's seven point six one acres. It is not closer to five, it's closer to ten. Okay, then we have twenty, this is the piece of property right here, right? And we have ten, ten, twenty, ten, 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 twenty, ten, ten, twenty, twenty. And then over here we have, what is it, like six hundred something? And then over here we have.
One sixty.
Yeah, so, so let's just take a moment, if we're going to actually use this contiguous thing and do an average per owner, and then see what we get. I'm pretty sure it's going to be eight point.
Okay, guys, now you can go.
Art Patterson, three sixty North Woods Drive, which is just north of that state land. Um, I kind of had a similar comment because if you look at what the density is in current development level for the area, I mean, you'd have to. and current development level for the area, I mean, you'd have to take the average. So even if you took this whole segment out here and you said it was all seven, just by adding this, you're going to cut that, you're going to double that size, right? Much less than you, this is, you know, if they're saying that this is contiguous, then now let's cut that half again, okay? And then you got another 160. So your average is starting to head north of 20 acres. Even if you're really considering what this current state of development is in the area as opposed to cherry picking this one. This, okay, great, you want to pick this? Well, why don't we pick this? Why don't we pick that? So it's not really consistent. There's just a lot of inconsistency as well in the developer and their statements in terms of, well, don't you guys realize that you're going to get more taxed per acre by doing this change? And by the way, we want it for lower income economic diversity. I mean, this is, it's, it's a little goofy that they're, they're trying to jump through all these extra, check all the boxes as well. They're contradicting themselves in doing. Fisher Reed's question was just getting ignored about what's wrong with the tents. It's zoned for tents. Why, why do we have to completely come in and do five? I think for people, that's an equal application of law. That's what they chose to live in. And they're not looking for all the spots only where suddenly things get a special exemption. As well as Fisher Davis's question about, you know, staff completely ignored that question about evaluating versus Act 420. And they didn't want to show how it mattered to me up there. They only wanted to say, oh, residential five. So this is not good to see that much for a single word. I just thank you for talking to me.
Thank you.
Doug Patterson for the record, 360 Northwoods, right there. So thank you for the GIS incident. I think that's important for me. Zoom back in a little bit. Appreciate it. The plan that was presented to you folks coming out of the planning and zoning for, for this consideration. It has lots of introduction, but starting on page three. State soil types are prime farmland. And indeed they are. They're, yes, they, some of them, they're not watered, but they are the highest grade soil types in the county. And yeah, there are a lot of other soil, farm high act soils in the county, but a great many of them like this and that are owned by the federal government or the state government and cannot be developed or used for agriculture, though they are used for, for timber. So page 10, on the other hand, states that this is suitable to R5. And yet it is, with prime soils, it is not suitable for, for R5. Page three also, current uses at the bottom of that page claims that to the north you have vacant government land and residential use. To the east, that is also vacant government and government land resident, it says residential use on both of them. You can see that there is no residential uses in these. Mind you, that in terms of contacting surrounding properties, 300 feet. So if you go 300 feet in there, clearly there is, there is no residential property. Then if you go for, it talks to the east, it says, no, let's see. To the south, we have vacant land and residential use. Vacant land and residential use. Now, I can tell you that these properties, several of them have, have critters growing on our property. They have cattle, they have sheep, they have animals. We have pages, a whole cluster of picture of the surrounding area. And it's used for agriculture land. Also, clearly to the west is obviously agriculture. This is used for forestry, but that's way beyond 300. So their, their definitions of this vacant residential use is, is not true. So page four and five and six states out the code. Page 10. Can you turn there? There's a lot of the applicant's noise and there's a lot of the and the actual definitions of what these things are. We'll get to some of those here in a minute, I believe. So staff analysis, AM 0018-20, I think it's planned that, middle of the page. This section and following staff review, focus on the lack of 30% or greater slopes. It says, the county road is well developed and there is no challenges to development. Okay, so the county road, that'd be this county group. If you go to the road and bridge, they will tell you that it is substandard. It is substandard for amongst other reasons, it has no shoulders. It is also narrow by the state's definition of what county roads are supposed to be. So it is substandard. And the, the parcel does not have hazardous areas here. As pointed out by Spirit Lake Fire Chiefs, they say there should be more than one ingress to.
There is.
You can see, oh, yeah, not going to be a subdivision? Take a look at that room that's already punched in there. So there is, you have subdivision. They can hear of lands that are already owned. There's no right of ways through there. You have state forest here and you have federal government land there. So there is no way to make another way in or out of this. They have one way in and out. And it puts 32 people, which one way in and out is, is a danger as the fire department in Spirit Lake is stated. The site has inherent, inherent world, I will say, of police and fire and ambulance service. And certainly they didn't have police, fire and ambulance service, but the area is residential and far out enough that, that is difficult. We've had several people die in the area for, in car wrecks because you can't get somebody evacuated out of the fast stuff. That's my first.
Six, six minutes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Doug, I'll get it done, huh?
No, he's only get six minutes. That's the state law, how it's set up. So thank you very much, sir.
Well, thank you for, for all of your work. And, and you also have the opportunity to kick this back and read it.
Okay, who's next here? This row here, please. Well, they have, we have the procedure that has to go through up here.
I think those are in the record already, aren't they?
Uh, it's the pictures of the farm animals. They are.
Oh, I did send the last shot.
Yeah.
Those, yeah.
All right.
So, yeah, he's probably up soon. But this one here, so this is, I'm going to access. And.
Yeah, Brian's stuff is not.
And this is a letter from Sean that's a state soil scientist.
Okay. Okay.
So, Maury Patterson, 360 Northwoods Drive, Creece River, Idaho. Thank you also for your volunteer efforts. But and when he passes out these maps, it, it shows basically what they also have up here, which shows that there is that Radstrom, Radstrom Bonner Sealed Loams. We have a letter from Sean Yeele, who is the state soil scientist in Boise, affirming what Brian Donkey, I think everyone received a letter from Brian Donkey on the soil analysis. And the level three and four is the very best in all Idaho state because of the number of frost predates. Okay, so just talking about irrigated versus irrigated. That is the best prime farm and soil we have is what is here. I want to emphasize that. I don't think we should discount the Spirit Lake Fire Chiefs comments. They're saying because about splitting or whatever. Because he emphasized there's a 10% increase in the last year of vehicle crashes as well as hampered emergency response. This is what the other people are saying as well. The in-risk, be-risk is extremely important. He said that there should be another point. The reason why there isn't, well, we carry a half standard of ones. We'd have to get, I guess, permission or something that I carry now, state force. So everyone would be dumping right off one point. There was a staff report in February 4th, the first staff report. It correctly identified all the abutting lands as having comprehensive plan designation agricultural forests. Here we have the 160. Oh, that's a key one, that's 640. And over here you have the quarter mile federal forest. Over here, you're a mile, square mile. And over here, the 10 and 20s in Chittenden. And they correctly identified the adjacent forests. I know you realize the role of agriculture chapter in our comprehensive plan states that Bonner County seeks to promote retention of agricultural lands by implementing planning strategies that facilitate agricultural productivity and agribusiness activities. And this other, the, you can see from the photos and, and the handout that that is the agriculture that is going on, that that, you have pictures of the hay fields over here of the horse farms over here. I mean, this is all very much agriculture. So I recommend a denial. And this latest staff report, I think is erroneous and arbitrary.
Thank you.
Tom Lewis, 280 Northwoods, Creece River. Sent a letter from Andrew Scott from Blanchard that he asked me to read tonight. On December 10th, the Idaho Department of Fish and Game wrote a response to the planning department regarding the dom zoning application to assist in the decision-making authority by providing technical information addressing potential effects on wildlife and wildlife habitat and how any adverse effects might be mitigated. And some parts of this letter that he highlighted were, this particular application request would double the amount of development currently allowable and it will significantly contribute to fragmentation of a large, a currently large undeveloped parcel. While we realize that this request is simply a zone change, comprehensive plan adjustment, we can only assume this would change, this change would be in preparation for subdivision and development. We make this assumption on the basis that a construction company is submitting the application along with the planning and the zoning company. And development of the area is mentioned several times within the application. The fishing game also goes on to say, we are concerned about the cumulative effects of similar requests and subsequent development that occur if they are approved. Doubling the number of septic systems in close proximity to Hooten Creek could have a negative effect to water quality due to additional nutrients input through the process of, through the forest soils in the area. Warm water and excess nutrients both contribute to harmful algae bloom and can have negative impacts on fish habitat and water quality and contribute to decline in fishing opportunities. Deer, elk and turkey will remain in the area and may be problematic to residents. Moose, bear, mountain lion are also present and create a potential human wildlife conflict if residential development occurs. This application states that proposed change will have no immediate impact on adjacent property. The application does not address wildlife habitat. Development at a higher density will result in negative impacts to the wildlife and Idahoans who enjoy the wildlife in the area. In summary, wildlife use, wildlife use will be negatively impacted within the immediate area where conversion of forests, further subdivision and development occur. Continued development will change the abundance, diversity and distribution of wildlife within Bonner County. That's the end of Andrew's letter.
We're out of time, sir.
Wait, we'll use time?
Okay, three minutes, finish.
Going on with the staff report analysis. The staff review says that this 160 acres is missing every criteria for AF 20 or 10 designation. But per land use designation, 12-322 AF 20, page five, plots that are also prime agricultural soils, which says use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated by the comprehensive plan as follows. AF 20 in the area is designated as prime ag forest land in the comprehensive plan. The AF 20 zone is also appropriate in areas designated as ag forest land in comprehensive plan that also features prime agricultural soils. As we talked about earlier, as far as the area immediately surrounding this area are characterized by agricultural or forestry uses, which this land of the development was forested recently. Areas where one or more of the following apply, limited services. Services have to come in from Spirit Lake by sloper, it does not have the slope issues. And where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems. And where large tracts of land may be devoted to agricultural forest production. Therefore, AF 20 is applicable, is already zoned up to AF 10, which is permissible but minimal. Staff conclusion is false. R5 is wrong by both criteria and through bottom. And it continues to be wrong. While R10 might be appropriate, R5 is clearly not appropriate.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello. My name's Don Holland, 200 Amber Drive, Sandpoint. Just all cold and cold. I, I, a lot of what I was going to talk about is already been discussed. So I'll try to be very brief and just run through it. But the subject property, the acknowledged to have prime ag soils, there's no question about that. And so and if the, as it's zoned now, it's 10 acres that were to be coming from Ag 10 to go to R10, it still has the prime ag soils. it still has the prime ag soils. County Code doesn't allow a division down to R-5, the R-10, the prime soil. Norman Semenko, uh, attorney from Boise spoke to that at the last commissioners meeting before it was kicked back to this commission. And that a adjoining or contiguous or nearby property doesn't really affect the subject property that you're talking about. And in fact, that property, the subject property, can't really be divided down into a lesser density. Uh, because of that. That is not a good solid reason, as many people have stated. Uh, the idea that because it's nearby or contiguous, you all of a sudden get influence to say, "Oh, because they are a lesser density, they are a smaller acreage, why can't I have the same thing over here?" When you knew and you bought property otherwise. Um, you had a chance to buy smaller properties, maybe you should. But the idea that you just go ahead and make a case that because they have it over there, now I deserve it on here, even though it's zoned differently. There's a contagion that just wouldn't stop when you start to think about it. If you have this touching that, touching that, touching that, and you drop down, I mean, we're going to get up to the borders of Fond du Rhé River. And, um, so that's kind of scary. And that's kind of the mood of the people in the valleys. They are afraid of, they are afraid of, of unbalanced, um, uh, development. And certainly, we feel that there's bias out there now. Uh, that, that there are groups out there, I, I, I'm part of one, that is trying to articulate some of the people's feelings in the valley and land use procedures that we feel are being abused on to, to make happen almost any developments that's asked for. Irrespective of zoning in that area. Guys, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
No, it's not easy.
Cheryl Kins, 316 Kippee Row, Sandpoint. Advice, Bonner County Code 12-111. Purpose, zoning regulations in districts where the unincorporated areas of Bonner County as herein established have been made in accordance with a comprehensive plan and Idaho Code for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of people of Bonner County as follows. So what I get from this is that, um, the zoning, uh, codes are supposed to be made from the comprehensive plan, they're to be derived from the comprehensive plan. So the people in this county have said, "This is what I want for our land, this is our land, our comprehensive plan." And we, we didn't say we want everybody to come in here and change it or do willy-nilly and do whatever you want with it. Um, under the purpose, one of the things is to encourage the protection of prime agricultural forest and mining lands for production of food, fiber, and minerals. We have five, I have five generations here. There are a couple that are gone now that are farmland. And, um, I want to retain farmland in North Idaho. Under zoning districts, it says the purposes are to establish districts compatible with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Again, back to the comprehensive plan. Wherein compatible uses of land may be located and grouped to create, protect, or maintain a quality environment for citizens of Bonner County. He says acknowledge the values of agricultural and timberlands. To get over to agricultural forestry district. And I'm not sure why we're always trying to hold stuff up to this criteria when, um, you're to go by the comprehensive plan and then make the zoning code stop. So if the code, code here is wrong, doesn't follow the comprehensive plan, then what is it you need to change? The code, not the comprehensive plan. Until the people decide, putting in their sub, sub-area comprehensive plans, then that's when it changes. When you, when you talk about being dynamic, it's dynamic when the people decide, the people decide it's our comprehensive plan, that now we're going to change it to this. Okay. So under this agricultural. That's one thing.
Anybody want to give her three minutes?
Okay, so just, just for kicks. I went under the USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, uh, agriculture. Prime farmland is defined by the US Department of Agriculture as land that has the best combination of physical and chemical characteristics for producing food, feed, forage, fiber, and oilseeds crops, and is available for these uses. It can be cultivated pastureland, forest land, or other land that is not urban or built-up land or water areas. Soil quality, growing season, and moisture supply are those needing for the soil to economically produce sustainable or sustain high yields of crops when properly managed, including water management and acceptable farming methods are applied. In general, prime farmland has an adequate and dependable supply of moisture for precipitation or irrigation, a favorable temperature and growing season, few or no rocks. And then it goes down to slope ranges mainly from 0 to 6%. Not 30%, great. That's the most ridiculous thing to try to farm on. I mean, I couldn't believe it when I read that. You know, I, I, I thank you guys for your work that you do. But we also have trusted you guys to have our back on this comprehensive plan and back us for it when while we're working all day. I had no idea that things like this ran here. 30%, great, really? And we're holding it up to that? And plus, um, the, the, the cause is made because we're losing 800 acres, 800,000 acres to more than 3 million nationwide of agricultural land annually. It needs to be protected. We had more hay customers than we could fill this year. And their hay had to be brought in from the basin at three times the price of what it was here. How are we going to continue to raise animals around here? I'm asking for your help and deny this. Stop this spot of zoning. I mean, I could go on and on, but the plea is made to retain the agricultural land. Retain our comprehensive plan until you replace it with the new sub-area ones that you've had on your plate for a while. And it'd be nice to stop this, maybe stop everything for a while. Go to those new sub-area things, examine them, and maybe we'll get a new one in. But I would say most of this county wants to keep agricultural lands, forestry lands, rural lands. And it's no different when stop the growth that we can handle. Thank you.
Okay, let's finish up on that back row there, please.
My name is Ray Shalat, 2033, State Loop. Right up in here on South End. Three things very quickly that haven't been talked a whole lot about. The access to the emergency services in that general area uh, for fire, for emergency medical services. You can have a wait of anywhere from 10 to 30 minutes on a good day. Weather like we have tonight, who knows? Uh, moving on, access to water. I know that there's a number of wells on the properties on the State's Loop that are 100 feet or less. If someone were to punch 32 wells into this property here, you can't tell me for a second that that's not going to impact local water supply. Lastly, the properties of the subject property that we're speaking of tonight, how many of you are aware that those properties are already listed as 5-acre parcels? Thank you.
Rodney Wheeler, 877, State Loop. And we might be applying example of why it should be built with 5 acres all over the place. Um, I would just like to say that, um, it, it's time to stop, just like what Cheryl was saying, as far as all this 5 acres, 5 acres, all this division without getting these sub-area comprehensive, let's get the people's voices on the record and written down, and then let's go for it. We're going to grow no matter what. What we've got to do with the plan, we cannot keep doing the cart before the horse. So we're going to have our guests. Thank you.
Sir, go ahead. Okay. All right. Is there anybody, is there anybody else? Yeah, anybody else in the back want to say anything? All right, so there's no one online, good thoughts up?
Okay, just wondering, because I was under my time. I just wanted to talk to one other, um, point the applicant was trying to justify this with. It said that we needed to grow just the single adjacent plot to the west. Add other 16 units of talking about growth, so there's plenty of growth potential on that.
Okay, so we're going to close public comments, and there's no more public comment. Okay. Mr. Graham will get his two bottles, along with Jason if he is be upstairs, and then we'll move to commissioners' deliberations. Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey, commissioners, public for coming out and expressing their opinions. As I mentioned before, I've been on both sides of these things, and I do respect the process that allows people to voice their concerns. Tonight, I represent Mr. Dom, and I just want to rebut a few things that were mentioned, correct a few things. First and foremost, it really comes down to what is rural, right? That's what I heard over, over, over again, is, you know, protect the rural character, protect the rural farming. Um, you know, hit pause, adopt a new comp plan. Well, a couple of things on that point. The comp plan that we have, and I'd be the first to say that every comp plan should be updated regularly, um, is the one we have. And my client owns property, um, and it's his right to request this, uh, zone change and comp plan amendment. It's your job to determine whether or not using criteria that you've used in the past, consistent findings of facts, like you have on dozens of other zone changes in the last three years, uh, to determine whether or not this application meets the standards that you have set up. Those standards are articulated in Bonner County Revised Code. Um, and to speak to some of them, the first one I want to speak to is this question of, uh, what's the necessity of the application? Quite frankly, that is a subjective request and requirement. Uh, Idaho Code clearly states that standards for applications need to be consistent and clear and measurable. So necessity, I'll say it, is because the applicant needs to make more money on this parcel, I presume. But, uh, the necessity is subjective, and, um, I don't know how you nail that one down. Uh, getting back to what is rural, um, you know, I, I showed in my presentation, Idaho Code, Idaho PAX considers 5 acres and larger a farm. Now, we heard in your comp plan, it's in the comp plan, uh, the agricultural community was quite, you know, unclear what is viable farmland. Is it 20 acres? No, in the comp plan, it says 20 acres, it's too small. 10 acres is too small. Um, maybe, um, you know, by defining it as 60 acres, this is just a way to block anyone else from moving to Bonner County. So I, I don't know how you define what is rural. When I fall back on, there are two things in this case. One, uh, the Idaho Code identifies a farm as 5 acres or larger. Farming can clearly proceed, as was stated in the staff report, uh, under the 5-acre zone. And two, I would point to the fact that of most areas in Bonner County, this area is surrounded by, um, higher density of access to open space and, uh, access guest lands, clasto that conservation is, that some of the public lands around. Uh, the vast majority of this region is protected and will be rural in perpetuity. Uh, moving on to the soils, I want to just call out, um, under the natural resource, as I did in my presentation, uh, component, chapter of the comp plan, 3-2, table 3-1, which identifies and classifies your prime ag soils. And above that table, it says, "This table shall not constitute a recommendation for a particular land." So looking at your rules, the code, these things that you have to weigh and kind of juggle, um, the, the fact that portions of this property does have some soils identified as prime ag soils, not denying that. But is that a prohibition, an outright showstopper for consideration of, of rezoning and changing the comp plan designation on this land? I think not. Um, there is a question about traffic and access, and I don't want to underweigh those. Those are very serious issues that planners and people need to address. But that all comes at the subdivision process. That is not where we're at today. Um, we are at the comp plan and map amendment and the rezon amendment, uh, right now, the request. And we want to emphasize these are requests. We're not saying you have to, as I explained in my presentation. You have to find that these requests are in accordance with the comp plan. And based on the evidence and testimony and the record, based on your historical actions, um, based on the staff report, it would appear, and what I've represented, is that these requests are consistent and in accordance with the comp plan. In fact, I think you really have to go out on a limb to, to suggest they're not uh, based on your historical actions as this farm. Finally, um, I don't know what magic sighs disqualifies lies a property as a farm. I own the farm. I've got friends who are urban farmers, you know. Again, I fall back onto Idaho Code to get the tax exemption. It's 5 acres or greater, that's what we're asking for here. So, um, again, I want to emphasize, I really appreciate the public process. I know there was some sniggering about rocks in soil and some of the things I said. Um, I appreciate people's perspective, and I appreciate the respect that was given by my client and myself to put this request forward tonight. And, uh, we answer any questions that we have before I finish.
Any questions of Mr. Graham before we move to deliberations?
Here's one question, Commissioner Reed. Was there any kind of study done, because some of the studies were dated, of actual traffic on Duke Road and on also Spirit Lake Cut Off Road? Is anything with that? Give me those counts as of one point. Because traffic has changed out there tremendously.
I, I don't deny that, Commissioner Reed. Um, well, say as I subscribe to a service as a remapping that has traffic counts, the ones I showed in the 1500 were the most recent data points that have been done out there. And secondarily, I would say that traffic that, that's going to come forward through the subdivision, you're not asking that of your subdivisions right now. You should be asking and looking at that at the subdivision stage of this process. This is the first step to get there. Oh, I just, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Jeremy?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. I appreciate all that you and your staff do as well. I just, I know this is I know this is a city, and I know you double the lines.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to commissioners deliberations in motion two.
I'd like to say that I travel Spirit Lake Cut Off fairly often, and I find it to be quite a dangerous road. It doesn't have any margins on the side of the road. It has no, virtually no marking on the road, so late at night or in weather like this, you have no idea where the road is, and at points, it's, there are extremely sharp curves that are very dangerous. I've heard the police say that they have a lot of accidents in that road. So adding more people to that road gives me concern.
So commissioners, I'd like to remind you that we're here talking about zone change, and we're not here talking about its development. And so those studies have, are not provided in this, in this analysis.
So if I could ask a question of staff, has there ever been a case where we denied a subdivision that was in accordance with the current zoning based on traffic?
No.
No, but there have been improvements that have had to have been made. There was hearing just this last week to require such improvements.
What sort of scope are those improvements?
Probably intersection.
Yeah, intersection improvements on the scene.
This last one is going to require a second hearing of secrets.
Okay, good. But not, not riding, I don't know how long Spirit Lake Cut Off is, 10, 10 miles of road.
Correct, it's not going to create this type of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll just say, that's a frustration. I understand that we're not here to evaluate the subdivision, but it's a frustration because it feels to me like once we make a decision here, we're setting the wheels in motion and we can't pull it back.
Absolutely.
And so.
Which, which is why, excuse me, this is Commissioner Davis, which is why under, we're talking zoning now, zoning code 12-215 has A through F. And we're talking, and this is the preamble of that is, applications for zone change and comprehensive plan amendment context. An applicant for a zone or comprehensive plan amendment shall submit the following, A, B, C, D, E, F. And then F says, any other information considered by the planning director or the governing body to be necessary for a complete evaluation proposal, such as information regarding utilities, traffic, service connections, natural resources, unique features of the land, or offsite features affecting the proposal. So we can ask for it. As I stated, another zone change and even comp plan amendments, of course, we're looking at an eventual subdivision. What else would they be doing? What are they doing out there creating a road in the middle of it? It's going to be a subdivision, they're going to ask for it. Yes, these things can be done then, but it's our responsibility to make sure that we're not making an error in setting up the first stage of comp plan amendment and a zone change.
So Dom, I, to your point, I'm saying that we did not analyze this application for those things. We have not requested.
Right.
If you would like to request those, it would require several things, one, an extension from the board.
Right, we got against that again. Yeah, I mean, because again, we're a comp plan amendment or a zone change, we have to make a decision within so many days of this hearing.
And to go along with the goals and objectives, I don't feel we can follow in that if you're looking for subdivision. Another thing that we do need to look at is, we all know the road is substandard. We travel that, I do a couple times a week, several times a week, but again, a lot of accidents. Dupont Road is not adequate. We had a terrible tragedy a couple of years ago when a log truck driver, I don't know, related his doggy. He didn't have a choice. That, that road was so narrow when it came around the corner, that was the only thing to do. She was there. It was, we all remember that. That road, that road is substandard for the traffic it has now, and so is Spirit Lake Cut Off. We had folks in from the fire department and from medical department last time saying it takes us too long to get out there. It's taking longer.
And the county, county is looking at potential for putting something out there. So I mean, it still comes down to are there adequate services or not?
So commissioners, again, if I may, sorry to jump in, but again, we would, we would expect if the road was substandard and there was a problem with it, we would expect, expect a comment like that from Road and Bridge. And we received no comments from Road and Bridge. So for, so for folks to say that this is a substandard road, it may well be, but we did not receive any of those comments, so.
But we did receive a comment, and I forget whether it was from the fire chief or somebody down. We did receive a comment that, that the number of accidents are up 10% year over year on Spirit Lake Cut Off.
Absolutely.
So that would, that would logically lead someone to conclude that there's, there's already a traffic safety issue with that road under the current, current design situation with the road and the current traffic use.
Yeah, I, the traffic thing, it's, it's a puzzle, it's countywide. Spirit Lake Cut Off Road is equal in most everything to many, many other miles of county road in Bonner County. In Bonner County, the only roads that are up to any standard at all are the state highways. So it's hard to say, it's hard to pin that on anything, that's an existing problem. Comes down to 16 more potential lots with the zoning and the comp plan amendment. Is that going to tip the scale or whatever? Yeah, other, other points.
Yeah. To me, we have a well in a subject situation where subcommittees are forced to us that that is a drainage, and that does drain into the aquifer. We know the topography out there, we know moving into that area is a lot of wetland coming down to there, that's a lot of drainage going in that direction. We have to think about our neighbors, that goes into aquifer for Spokane and all too, it's where it eventually goes. We've got a lot of going into that soil, and you're going to be pulling a lot out with wells. We've had problems this last year, like you folks pointed out, several people's wells went dry. There's so many things to be considered. And why not stick with it? But it doesn't make you rule 10 as it is now. And I do need to bend the point.
Well, yeah, it's a, number one, we say that the zoning code was put in place and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, by looking at the maps, it is 10 acre zoning, it is Ag Forest designation. By its own definition, that says that it's consistent. But now we're here saying, no, it isn't, it's a mistake. So which is, is it consistent or is it not? The premise to change it is that it's not. And, and the criteria, as has been pointed out time and time again.
10 properties around it are to be cleared.
Yeah. One parcel contiguous with the property is not. And it's, it's aiming more towards 10 than 5, as was pointed out.
So before you get to the whole question of, is the area developed at 5, you have to get to rural first from Ag Forest. And because there is no Ag Forest 5. And, and to me, when I look at all of the land use designations in the comp plan, to me, this is a good fit for prime Ag Forest. Meet all the criteria for prime Ag Forest. And, and as we know, that would be Ag Forest 20 zoning only.
Right.
If we were to get to rural, and I'd have to be convinced that that's the right land use designation first, I'm not. The five acre question, I think there's two ways to look at it. You could look at contiguous properties, in which case there's one property less than 10, and everything else predominantly much larger even than 20. Another way to look at it would be to look at a broader area. You drew a circle centered on the property in question that was about a mile and a half radius. That's large enough to encompass that entire group of sub 10 acre parcels up there to the northeast. Across that whole area then, now we're looking at a circle that's three miles in diameter. Only 15% of it is those sub 10 acre properties. So either way I look at it, if I look at an area, which is really what the code says, it doesn't say contiguous properties. Or if I want to look at contiguous properties, my conclusion is that, that, that requirement that this, that the area be already developed, that that five acre density isn't met. So then you go back, does it meet the requirements for rural 10? And it does, it's, prime ag soils is one of them. You only have to meet one requirement for rural 10. Prime ag soils is one of them, it meets that requirement. And another, well, maybe, I guess I'm not sure, we had some testimony that maybe Spirit Lake Cut Off is a substandard road design. I don't, if it is, that's another, that is another criteria for rural 10. If it turns out that it is, is, and there's some technical details about what that means to be substandard. So either way I go, I, I can't get to, this should be our 5. I'm not convinced that Ag Forest is the right land use designation as it sits. That requires steep slopes, doesn't have it. Some other things, but if it's not Ag Forest, in my opinion, its best land use designation is prime Ag Forest. Fits all the criteria.
I know.
Well, but we're asked to reconsider, that's why I asked Jason the question. Did he, did he look at all of the land use designations, right? If we're going to reconsider, we, we come back to, we talked, we've talked about this repeatedly over the last four or five months about this necessity issue, and from this table, we, we pretty consistently say we find it's necessary if we determine that the current land use designation or the current zoning doesn't fit the characteristics of the property. Well, if we're asked to sit here and consider, does it, does, does the property fit the characteristics of the current land use designation or the current zoning? And we say, well, in some cases, no, well, which does it fit? We don't just jump to one that we've picked, cherry picked, we should look at them all. And I think if we're going to acknowledge that there are places where it's, it's not correct because we didn't look at each individual parcel back when the comp plan was done or when the zoning was put in place, then we ought to look at, well, what is the best fit? And, and I think it fits prime Ag Forest, frankly. As I said, even if, even if I go down a different path, even if people can change my mind and say, well, maybe it should be rural residential. Okay, I still come back to 10 acres because it doesn't mean that the area is already developed that that five acre density requirement, in my opinion, either way you look at it, whether you want to look at contiguous properties or draw a bigger circle and look at the area as a whole. Either way, I think that test has failed, and it does meet our 10 requirements. So that's still 10 acres, either way you look at it, I, I come, I come to 10 acres. I, we can't, I don't think, I don't think we can change it to prime Ag Forest here, sitting here tonight, but, but, but I, but I, I don't think I can say, let's go to our 5 anyway we go, in my opinion.
I, I took it from several years to eight, I worked on this the last couple of days myself, trying to see all sides of it, and I don't see a fight out there at all. And then I looked, we should be doing things that are beneficial. Benefit for the community, controlled growth, it's going to grow, but it needs to be controlled. Then I take a look, this is going to benefit, going to benefit the developer. It's going to be strange and many things, but it's going to benefit mainly the developer. And I have a problem that we're supposed to be here for the whole community, for the whole area, not for the developer. For this one whole, sometimes it is, not in this case.
Chairman, I, I don't know if Commissioner Glasso.
I was going to ask, Commissioner Glasso, you have.
I've been waiting for a break. I've been waiting for a break not to interrupt anybody. So Commissioner Glasso, I just, first I want to apologize for not being there because of the weather. If you know where I live, I'm way up in the mountains and it's kind of difficult. So a couple of things I want to point out, we are here to, as commissioners, to represent the people. We're not on the county payroll, we're on the people's payroll, and we need to look at what best suits the people and the land use. And so I wouldn't have brought up necessarily the wells because it is only a zoning, except for the fact that the applicants representative, Jeremy did bring it up in regards to this would all be serviced by private wells. I, up here where I'm at, am on a private well, and I've been reading a lot lately in regards to private wells and concerns, and even the USGS has piped in in regards to this. In the last two years, there's been a lot of comment in regards to wells, private wells, water availability, and overall global dry wells. And so what we have to look at here is that if in fact you're going to be going with dry wells, well, what the applicant presented was well logs. So one of the well logs formed, it's formed when you actually tap the well and you figure out how many gallons per minute you get. There's no need to, nor is there a requirement to come back one year, three years, five years, 10 years later and say, hey, what is your current gallons per minute? Nobody does that, you just have the initial tapping and that amount. So when you start dropping in more houses, you know, 32 houses into an area, what happens to those wells? Well, you can pull out a well log of what happened when it was tapped. It has nothing to do with what the impact of the water and the usage and the availability is when you start dropping in more and more subdivisions and more and more houses. So there you are falling back to the natural resources, and we aren't getting a full study or an analysis of what is going to happen to wells and water and availability to natural resources if you drop in all of these wells that are being proposed. So that's, that's my two cents worth there on that, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. They've given us some sense of promotion. Don, is there anything you can do?
Well, I'm trying to shape it so that I can use the language in the comp plan to shape the motion, uh, because as we need to, recommendation denial would have to state exactly why. So.
Let's hear statements.
Oh, we have to.
I, I would like to invite some more discussion.
All right.
Well, yeah, we're so open for discussion. Just the issue I wrestle with in my mind is, is.
You need to even ask.
No, I, I, I don't think, I agree in a sense that ag for, it doesn't fit ag forest. Doesn't have the thirty percent slopes. It's on a county, public, paved county, public right of way, both of which are not criteria that fit with the ag forest land use designation. As an aside, I think I might mention this is a widespread issue with, with this particular land use designation in the counties. But to me, it's, it's a close call whether it should be rural residential or primag forest. It's a little, there's enough ambiguity in both of those descriptions that, like I said, it's, it's a close call. Um, as I said, if it goes rural residential, I'm going to be hard over it's our ten. So it's still ten acre lots, that doesn't change. But I guess I'd like to have a discussion about what, what the rest of the group up here thinks about primag forest versus rural residential. As the land, there's the correct land use category for this property. Or if somebody thinks you want to make a case that, oh, no, we should leave it as ag forest. I'd like to hear that argument too, but I, I, in my opinion, I don't see that, it doesn't fit. Pretty cut and dry. So I don't know.
Yeah.
What do my fellow commissioners think about that issue?
It's the rural residential, I'm looking in the comprehensive plan of chapter six point three, number seven, under land use and map designations. Rural residential, rural residential provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available, slopes may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats, where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources and exposure to loss of property and lives. Yeah, so, and then it goes on, small scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So basically that fits it. Uh, it doesn't, this particular, this is a description, not a, not a, you know, somewhat of a test, but there are no hazardous areas, this is not listed as critical have wildlife habitat. And this part of the sentence, where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources, well, yeah, lower is also subjective. Lower is, ten is lower than five, twenty is lower than ten. So how far do you go? And under the rural residential, that's just fine, that's a comp plan designation. The zoning code read that to say, here's rural residential, five and ten, not twenty.
So, so I read the, the include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats as, as a permissive statement, not as a requirement.
Not as a requirement.
Right, it says, so, so it includes, it says they, it can include areas that, that have critical wildlife or hazard areas, doesn't have to, they don't have to have those.
It says these areas include. Not may include, it says these areas include.
Yeah, I, I, I read this.
Yes, yeah, I, I, yeah, okay. Um, where it does, where it says about such may vary, you know, so there's already some subjective stuff in there, but then it says these areas include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitat, where lower densities reduce potential impacts on resources. So, and extraordinary, so all that sentence goes together. The lower density in hazard area or critical wildlife is going to protect property and lives. All right, so that's a statement all by itself. And then small scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. And that's what we have in front of us as a proposal is for rural residential, not ag, primag forest, whatever.
So, Don, would you agree that the letter from Fish and Games addresses that? Can you maybe, maybe let's confuse a little bit?
Yes, that's an issue in my mind, that's an issue.
And, and that gets back to my, maybe mistook, mistimed spoken statement at the beginning. As the comp plan language talks about in the land use section. An awful lot of time and effort and thought and angst was put into coming up with the comp plan designations and the map that followed it. And then three years later, the zoning code. And everybody at the time, we have to agree, said, this is ag forest and this is ten acres. That had to have, I, I've asked the prosecutor's office to tell us what weight that has in the argument. Yes, there's provision to change it. But, and we've, we've gone all around the axle with the, with the necessity test. And as has been stated, it's, it's extremely subjective. There's no definition of what necessity is, or you can look it up in the dictionary. Says there's a great need for it, it's necessary. So where's the great need? If you look at the area, you see an agricultural area. You, and, and granted, economic times have changed since two thousand five and two thousand eight. Lots of different pressures are out there now, but and it's, it's really only been in the last, what, two or three years that we begin to see a lot of pressure to change these things. Where for fifteen years, it sat the same as it was, everybody was satisfied, the landowners were satisfied. Uh, this, this particular landowner where this hundred and sixty acres came from owns a lot of property in the area. He decided to sell it off for whatever reason, that's somewhat, somewhat irrelevant, I, I, you know. He didn't want to continue to take care of the forest or farm the west end of it. And he's old. Well, that's what happens in all our areas, as I pointed out, the people in the Selly Valley, Mr. Selly used to own it all, and he broke it up over a thirty-year period. So, because he was making money on it. So, no, it happens, um, but I, I don't know where that leaves us.
Well, a, a couple of things, first if you scroll down further, there are some more.
Yes, there are.
Explicit criteria in the comp plan for the different land use categories. And for rural residential, it says density five to ten acres, individual services, uh, transportation category three, which is public right of way, which, so it meets that. Paved, paved or gravel, private easement, international fire code standard. I don't know if the road meets, meets that or not.
I think it does, it's, it's more than eighteen feet wide, it's got all the driving surface. No, it doesn't have shoulders, but it, it's wide enough to pass two vehicles.
And zero to thirty percent slopes. So it's, those are the criteria.
Rural residential.
Um, I have a process question for, for the staff, which is, where do we end up if we, if we go to rural residential and deny the zone change?
It can be done.
But what is the zoning then?
Says who it is.
Ag forest ten?
Yeah, which is inconsistent with the new comp plan. So, yeah, we're kind of stuck either way, it's an all or nothing kind of deal, as far as I can see.
Certainly, like I said before.
Yes.
For those of you in the audience, we are working on redoing the comp plan. And it is stated and planned and changed, so we're dealing with a lot of this. But having you both here gives us input when we run into situations like this, where, where it makes us think. Um, and it makes us see we do need to change some wording, change some things to make it work here for the next people. So that's why it's taking us a little bit of time here to make sure that we know what we've got proposed, but it hasn't been accepted yet. So we're trying to hear it, if you have any problems, we'll be there later.
Ask the kind of.
No, sorry, we have to open it back up for everybody, so. Um, in answer to Milton's question, uh, Fish and Games letter, I think did clarify a number of things. At first place, I, I greatly appreciate the letter. Uh, it was one of the better written comment letters we've received, either from Fish and Game or anybody for that matter. Uh, they were, they were very concise about it, and it, it did point to cumulative problems. Uh, one of the interesting aspects of Mr. Kirsty's letter, of course, his letter, um, he talked about Hoodoo Creek and the recharge of Hoodoo Creek, and it comes through the soils and so forth. And therefore it's, I think his letter implied that it's really unknown what the effect of more wells in the area would be. Well, issue, boy, like somebody quipped, that's a deep subject. It's very complex, and though there are no, very few people in this area or probably anywhere have well reporting systems for the condition of their well ongoing. Be nice if we did, that'd be really great, that's wonderful, wonderful information to know your static level and you draw down consistently throughout the year and year after year after year, because things change. Down in the Rafter Prairie further south, there are a number of inspection wells that the county maintains. And I'm not sure, but I think Water Resources does. But they monitor the levels, and of course it's for other things too, it's for plumes. There aren't any in this area that I'm aware of, and we didn't have anything from Water Resources that said so either way. Um, so we don't have that information. Where this group and, and the county commissioners as well, we have to rely on the agencies with expertise to inform us what the conditions are. And that's another part, like Cheryl was saying, as we get into the comprehensive plan amendment, we are going to be talking with those agencies about their responses and what it means, what the comp plan is, and how it all works together. Uh, we're not there yet, and I, I, I as well was not here during the time of the two thousand four, five comprehensive plan amendment of the two thousand eight zoning. I lived in the county, but I was not part of it, and I didn't choose to take part. Um, but talking with others who were, those discussions were taken on in those years to determine what the pressures were, what the ability of the agencies to perform and to provide services. And in two thousand five, which was again, that was, that was, think back to two thousand five. That was, we were aiming towards the peak, and then it collapsed later that year and into the next year. So the pressure was off in a sense for a few years, but now it's back on. Uh, I don't know, it, it's, um, I still go back to, it doesn't fit because the comprehensive plan that's put in place and the zoning that's put in place were done with reason. Strong reason, not willy-nilly. Yes, there's the broad brush aspect of the comp plan, there's the inability to look at every single parcel to make sure that it fits, and we even have what might be a, a bit of a discrepancy here on the designation of this area on the map and the zoning. Does it totally comply with the standards that have been called out in the, in the zoning code or the comprehensive plan? Doesn't appear to, so where are we?
These are things we need to consider. It says right there, extensions would be necessary, roads, public, private, whatever.
Yeah, and yet we can't, I mean, yeah, it's, we, we can't require that kind of stuff, we can, we can ask for it, but that's going to put us out of whack with the requirement to give a decision in.
Yeah.
It is.
Like we said, we're not a concern at all.
Yeah.
So also, I mean, I'll voice the, the concern I have, I haven't talked about it yet, but what I'm concerned about the fire chief's comments about not having two ways in and out. And I think the shape of this property is such that I'm not sure it's practical to have two ways out that are meaningful, given that, given that it's so narrow in the north-south direction, unless they got an easement to go across one of the government properties to go in the other direction.
Yeah, to the road to the east.
I think it's they road.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it could be making a loop with Chippendale, that's a possibility physically, physically, but.
Then you got to get, I think you have to get easements through other people's private property.
You have to go across that.
Yeah, I mean, it is, so these are, these are points, but they're not, they're not totally, absolutely germane. But they're, they're, yeah. And, and that's the other thing, we've talked about it before too. Idaho does have codified the possibility of having a contract zone or a, uh, I forget the word, where you put conditions on a zone change that then follow into the subdivision stage. But it's, it has not been done that I'm aware of in Bar County, it's not in Bar County code.
That's great, that's why it's not.
So that's why it's not there yet, you know, and, and it's a, it's a, it's another deep subject, it's another well. Um, yeah, so. Definitely. So. I don't know, any, any thoughts?
Further.
If you want to jump in, go ahead.
Or Suzanne.
Yeah, or Suzanne. Further thoughts, Suzanne?
Sorry, I muted, sorry, I muted. Um, no, I'm just listening to all of it, I threw my two cents worth in there. I, you know, I, I liked your opening comments, Don, in regards to going with the twenty. Um, I'm still not at a five, I'm definitely in a ten and no less than a ten. Um, I'm still not at a five. I'm definitely in a ten and no less than a ten.
Because we all attend in form of decisions, so we sort of get home.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I think we can talk about that a little bit, um, and go into a motion with it. So looking at the, the findings of fact. Oops, better get to that one. Nope, that's another. The findings of fact and conclusions of law. Let's see, it's, it was. So what are some of the other facts that we have talked about here that are not, either not included in the staff report findings of fact or. Massage or maybe even contradict the findings of fact? I don't think they contradict them, but. Prime soils.
I'm okay with the findings of fact. It, it's when you. On this first motion, the, the land use designation. I just, I just would argue that marginally, I think it's. It's a better fit for prime ag forest. Like I said, it's, it's a, it's both, both descriptions are. Open ended enough that. Um, I think you could make the argument that, that rural residential is, is an okay land use designation for this area. But when we get to the next motion. I, I would, I would strongly.
Yeah.
Suggest it be denied because I think it doesn't meet the criteria for our five at all.
Okay.
So.
But again, that leaves us with a built in dilemma. Is it recommending approve, uh, revising, amending the comp plan map to show it rural residential? And yet the zoning could remain with the recommendation of denial, so zone would remain AF ten.
I know, it does make a lot of sense to me, but.
It's a built.
I, I understand. It's, it's a concern.
It, it almost. Rather than, boy, rather than building in a dilemma. Just say it doesn't fit. Um. So therefore to recommend denial of the comp plan map amendment. Somehow to put in there the, um. The contiguous property test or the, uh, and, and then as far as the conclusions of law. I mean, I, I could see where it would say is not in accord with the following elements, land use. Because. Yeah. Well, it's not, not in compliance. The request is not in compliance with the land use component of the existing conflict. Yeah. And then.
Commissioner Glasser, oh, I'm sorry, Don. I, I, you know, this is, this is, this is what I was saying a few weeks ago, is that. When a, when the presentation comes to us and we have to choose denial. If it's presented in A versus B, but we go, well, how about A versus C? It doesn't fit and that's really kind of, that's what you're up against and I was up against mentally on a couple of weeks ago, the same type of thing.
Right. Right. Well, it's, yeah, um. So. I'm goodbye with a little help from my friend. Somebody said.
Sure.
Okay, um. So this is Commissioner Davis. I would like to make a motion to recommend denial of file. Oh, wait a minute, I gotta get up and do it. File AM zero zero one eight dash two zero, which is requested. It's mag forest. Land to rural residential. And that's based on the fact that it is inconsistent with the existing comprehensive plan. This, the proposal would conflict with the continuity of the. Comp plan designation in the area, substantially in the area. Uh, under the present comp plan. And. That it is, we go. So that would be conclusion one of law, that it is inconsistent with the land use component. Of the existing comprehensive plan. Well, but we're dealing with a conflict. I don't even know why Title twelve was in the conclusion of law.
Because it's used Title twelve.
It's the process. It's a process question.
It is consistent with Title twelve as far as the process goes. Conclusion two, but conclusion three, the proposal is not in accord with the rural residential land use. Well, yeah. It's not in accord with the rural residential land use based on the history of the area, the, the, um, over. The seemingly overwhelming type of land use in the area. That was rough. I think so.
Commissioner Davis has recommended denial to the county commissioners filed AM zero zero one eight. Dash two zero comprehensive plan map amendment. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reed, a second back.
Commissioner Reed has a second. Any discussion?
None?
Where none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Now which I are you going for there?
Okay, so we need to move on to the zone change.
Get that on record real quick.
Commissioner Glasser, did you oppose?
No, she, she was with the.
She was a aye.
She was just late on it. I thought I made sure that.
Yes.
When I zoom in, I always wait for everybody else who's in the room and then I pause for half a second and then I say my response.
We were too quick to go to the opposed.
We're good.
Thank you Suzanne.
Uh, this is Commissioner Frankenbach. I move to recommend denial to the board of county commissioners, this project filed ZC zero zero one five dash two zero. Requesting a zone change from ag foresty ten to rural five based on the following conclusions. Um, it, it's, it's not in accordance with the comprehensive plan because it's. Not rural residential. Um, and it's not in accord with the rural five zoning district for the reasons we talked about. It doesn't meet the criteria of, of being already developed at or near that density. Uh, which is a requirement for rural five and it meets the requirements for rural ten, if, if it was rural residential. Um. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact, the conclusions of law set forth in the staff report as amended during this hearing and direct planning staff. To draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property. The action that could be taken, if any, to obtain his own change is to file a new application with the planning department. And meet the standards required by Bonner County Vice Code or pursue such remedies as may be applicable at Title sixty seven, chapter sixty five Idaho code.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to recommend denial to the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. ZC zero zero one five dash two zero zone change, done instruction LLC. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reed, a second back.
Commissioner Reed has a second. Any discussion? No clapping or anything else, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You are too. Okay, thank you Suzanne. Much appreciated. Thank you folks. Merry Christmas. Drive careful.
Stay tuned. Sure.
Well, nobody has.
Do I find this in my personal email or shared?
No.
Yeah, so guys, we're not done yet. We've got four dishes to go.
We gotta scramble.
All editing.
But if you go into a shared document. That's how the. Hands of the county document, this is the name of the file. Typically will have another, since we only had one file, it's all right there, but typically then there's another layer of hierarchy with the different, um, files that we're looking at. And then under each of the files, we'll see the application. So it's all in the shared.
Yeah, I did. See comments and all that kind of stuff, but I don't know where to find this.
It's staff report.
So staff report go there and it tells you how to make a motion.
Yes, that's all in, it's all in the staff reports. It'd be first page or something like that.
So I just.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Um, no.
She had.
Here we go. Eight thirty. Yeah, we need to.
Yeah. Folks, can you go out in the hallway, please? Because we're gonna finish that.
By the way, I can tell you that the code is not in compliance, not in accordance with the contract. And I'll start pointing out the specifics if you guys are making that claim.
No, we're not. We're not making that claim. We're reading through the code.
The code says it's compliant.
The code says it's compliant.
Sound, yeah, right.
This is in my opinion. How does this come? It's my opinion. The, the staff report is based on our analysis of the code. It's not based on my personal theories, Jasons or staffs, when we sit around and talk about it. Our analysis is based on.
The code says.
The code says. It has nothing to do. She, be careful.
She was just whispering.
Yeah, I know. I know you're frustrated. I know. And it is frustrating.
That's right.
Well, and, and I don't have a problem with the decision made tonight. I'm not upset about it. I don't have a problem at all. None. So, but, but I am gonna, you know, I am gonna talk about. I am gonna, you know, remind when, when and when we don't receive agency comments and, and what those comments mean to staff. Staff looks at this, uh, and looks at these projects. Are you telling what the code says? The, the history? I can't tell you about the history, Don. We're not gonna dive into the history. We're, we're not gonna look at the way it was done and all that stuff. We're gonna analyze it based on the code. And so, so our job is different for you.
I, I, I have, I speak, and you heard it tonight, you've heard it recently in some other files. I, I have a frustration with the. With the sequential nature of it, you know, we don't look at, look at traffic or any of these other things because we're not looking at a subdivision. But there are other sections of the comp plan that address those issues, transportation, natural resources. And we're directed to, in the, in those, through those objectives. To make decisions that, and I interpret that to be comprehensive decisions, right?
It's in the code as a, as a very. It's not a direct, it's not a direction. It's a very, the planning director may ask, right?
Yep.
May.
Sure.
And so, um.
You don't do it upfront. But it.
But the comp plan, for instance, says that the cost, that, 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 that development. Shall not reduce service levels below the current state.
There's no, there's no doubt.
Right?
Comp plan has.
Has those kinds of requirements in the, like, that's, I think, in the transportation section or public services section in the, in the implementation section for that particular section of the comp plan. How do we, how do we address that?
By going to the service provider and say, do you have excess capacity in order to serve this project?
But it's not just service. In this case, a lot of it, you hear it's roads.
But that's what state statute says as well.
That's a service.
State statute says that, that you cannot grant the zone change if the service provider says that it's going to cause a problem.
Right. Right? Or it's gonna cause the public.
But we never hear from road and bridge.
No.
We, because it's, because they don't say sixteen new places, that's a, they don't see the zone change as a problem, right?
And they don't see a ten percent increase in accidents in the road in the last twelve months as being a problem.
Because I don't get a comment. So I don't know what to do. So I have to assume that they don't see this proposal as a problem.
And they, and they don't.
They don't submit a comment.
Yeah, and, and I have, I didn't talk with Matt Mulder specifically about this project, but I, across the board, I talk about it with him a lot. And number one, the road system is adequate the way it is and it's got a lot of capacity to serve additional development. Yes, things change. You can't walk out any time of day and cross the road to your mailbox and get caught, get trapped. You might get hit. Well, that's a road. There's sixteen hundred vehicles a day on that road. That road has a capacity of sixteen hundred cars an hour per direction. That's the capacity of before it turns into a parking lot. That's not the safety standard. That's the capacity of the road.
See what I'm saying?
See?
So how do you make these decisions?
You can't, you cannot say that's an inadequate, inadequate road. There's not a, show me a county road in this county that's got full shoulders, a county road. Sorry.
I definitely thought about it on my way to put it later.
Yeah, yeah. Our state highways have eight foot shoulders, six foot shoulders, four foot shoulders at minimum.
Yeah.
But the county roads, and there's no way you're gonna get shoulders on the road. Other than a few places, I think it's gonna be a long and developed in front of.
But I guess I would say, uh, uh, in response to that, it's not a parking lot. It is not a, not sufficient when the comp plan says the level of services shall not be negatively impacted by new development. That's what it says.
Oh, I get it.
Maybe that's unreasonable, but that's what it says. Well, I mean, it's a very black and white statement, the way it's in the written in the comp plan.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
But all our decisions are supposed to be in conformance with the comp plan, the whole thing.
Yeah.
It missed every, every one of those motions that we make, missed every single section of the comp plan. And says it's in conformance with all of them.
They analyzed all those things when they created the land use section, right? All of those, all of those goals and policies were considered into the land use section.
Well, maybe, maybe not. Our land use section, our, our land use section doesn't even have goals and policies.
Jeremy's got a comment.
No.
No.
It doesn't.
Absolutely, it does.
Absolutely. Two. That are so nebulous, they don't mean nothing.
Well, so Mr. Green, he's got, he's got a comment here.
Great deliberations and I think so. On the request for studies on traffic, so you have this time construct by decision.
Yeah.
And you.
And let me start it on that.
But you could extend, potentially extend it to here and that way you have a decision.
It says, it says, it says eight days. So we'd have to get all of that information in and then, and then do it again in eight days.
That's pretty typical to come back.
Oh, yeah.
More about this, we'll do a study. It's not arbitrary. Some of you asked.
Yes, the, the previous plan commission got sideways before this report changed.
Yeah, zap this, zap this really good.
You got sideways, Leo. I don't remember that party.
I know. What? When Steve quit?
Hey, can I just in here?
Yeah. Thanks Suzanne.
I just, I just, something that's like in the back of my mind, it keeps coming up. We put that, we get moratoria, when it comes to my land division, if there's, if there's a family split, you gotta wait two years to sell your property. Wouldn't it be great if we put something like that, you do a zone change, you need like two or three years before you do a zone development subdivision development? Because you know what? I think that slows this really down. I just think like, you know, they, they want the zone change so they can push through the subdevi- subdivision. And if we put that gap in there, it just, I think it would really slow down the process.
Yeah, which is, yeah, because the whole thing has been gone to speed up the process. So I don't know. It's, it's something to consider. Well, no, I mean, but there's been a lot of things done to the code change, code changes in the last five years that have been done specifically to speed up the process. So I don't, so yeah, a lot of good discussion tonight.
Did you get notes?
No, not in my head.
I have just another comment. For, for when we do start writing, don't use and/or clauses.
Oh, yeah.
I looked at that, I looked at that stat and it's already developed at or near that density and/or doesn't, doesn't meet, doesn't meet the requirement of our ten. Uh, logically, I wasn't sure how to parse that. So I did a little bit of Googling. You know, the first place I went to was a legal site where the guy wrote pages and pages about how you should never use and/or an illegal document because it's ambiguous.
Right.
He says, if what you really say, or clause B, or both, say it.
Oh, that's exactly right. So, so, yeah, we did the same thing. I mean, we sat down with the planners, we sat down with attorney's office, and we had the exact same process.
Yeah. That's what the language is. How do you deal with it?
It's vague.
Uh, um, so you got anything else you need to tell us, or?
I don't think. We, uh, we are meeting with the sewer districts on January 5th. I think it's one thirty. And we got proposed to add back in the sewer district sign off on the VOPs, not included.
Okay.
So, that's our, that's scheduled.
Is the planning commission, zoning commission headed to a hearing?
It is. It's scheduled for January 12th.
Twelve. Yeah. Okay, so I've been for almost a year, I don't know. How many months has it been? Seven months that I've been meeting with.
Been a few.
Been meeting with Swati and Chad about the comp plan. And we've tried to put together a timeline scenario. Lately, we've been talking about, just the thing we talked about tonight, getting comments from the agencies with expertise. And how do we go about that? So eventually, I think we'll probably end up having during, uh, workshops have those agencies come in and talk with us as a body. In order to prime that pump, uh, one thing I'm suggesting is that we set up meetings now with Swati and Chad and me to initiate the discussion. Point out to them that, that we feel that we have to go to those agencies with expertise, and that's exactly what the state code says. They may not have any recognition of the comprehensive plan for anybody, but they, they are forced into the corner to, to, to say something. Most of them, that comment from Fish and Game was golden tonight. That was, that was the best comment ever.
Yep.
We, well, but, and they're hesitant to do it, but we need to have some frank discussions with them. And I, I'd like to start that. It's, it's not gonna be till January if at all. Plus, we'd like to meet with them and go to them on Fridays. Friday is our designated comprehensive plan day with the two planners and me, so we have the time dedicated to that. And we've got resources to do it. It's gonna take, there's, I forget, I, I didn't bring my other list, but there's, there's about nine or 10 individual agencies that we'd have to meet with to talk about this. And I would prepare Brian's signature from the commission saying, the commission is doing this, here's what we need to do. We'd like to sit down with you and have an initial discussion about it, about all of our responsibilities under the code, da, 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 da. And shape it so that it says, it's meaningful and it doesn't hopefully doesn't rival anybody or whatever, but it starts the process, recognizing that that's not, that's almost anecdotal information, but I'm not expecting any, any firm language or discussions or decisions out of these agencies at a first meeting. It would be a subsequent meeting. Probably be one of those workshops, if not the hearing, that we would consider their input, uh, for a hearing to whatever the hearing's gonna be for relative to the comp plan.
Well, that's to understand how much we really work.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm hoping. Things don't realize. So with you going, with you guys going and saying, no, we really aren't interested, give us your input.
Yeah.
Leaving that whole kitten in the gear.
I, oh, I, who knows what response I'd get out of a first meeting. But I'd hope to have it with, with Northern Lights and Avista, and maybe the other power company in the south, with the school districts, with, with, um, well, we're gonna have the sewer districts in here on the fifth, so that's the opportunity to talk with them about it then. That's, that's an interesting part. But the fire districts as well, the fire districts, as we already saw, Northside has put in place with the county's authority, uh, the fees, the impact fees. So that's a start down that path. There's more discussion there. But a broad range of discussion about impact development on their provided service, whether it's schools, water, fire, sewer, sheriff, uh, interesting, I looked Gem County, that little county north of Canyon County, down southwest, I don't know, small county, less population than we have. No, it's a little, little bit more, but it's a small county area wise. I don't know what the status is, but they put in a impact fee amendment to their comprehensive plan that covers the sheriff's department, the fire departments, what else was it? There was one other department roots? I don't think they did it. But they, and they can't do it for schools. They can do it for parks. It might've been for parks. I think it was. So the, the ones that the code, the state code says you can have impact fees in this arena, they have proposed it and it went to initial hearings back in May. I don't know what the status is. I don't know if it got approved, if it's on the books, but they're the first ones in the state to go across the board, every available flavor under impact fees that you can get on the state code, they've done it, or they've started. We'll have to check to see what the status of that is, but, and it's, it's good. It just reiterates uh, Title 85 of the Idaho Code, Chapter 67, Title 67, Chapter 85, verbatim, just puts it right in place back. It's very straightforward. And they're right, the same thing. So the, the same company that analyzed it all for them, Galena Consultants, did, did it for Northside. And they're, they're very sharp. They're not the only ones that can do that kind of work. There's others that are trying now to get on board because Galena kind of captured the audience. But there's others that, that can be, and we may have to rely on somebody like that.
Well, with that, we've come a capital improvements plan.
Oh, yeah.
So some of the frustration when we talk about transportation is the fact that, you know, a good transportation company can identify future roads, future problems.
Or improvements. Improvements on the system.
And so when you have developments like this, I mean, technically with these big lots coming off into development, we, we should have a community master plan, right? And they should be doing a community master plan and answering all those questions, you know, ahead of time, and, and let's talk about it real then, right? And, and instead of this, you know, hodgepodge flipping it.
Yeah.
And, and piece by piece.
Yeah, how does your piece fit into the whole? That's what's needed.
Yeah.
It's always proven to be the better way to go. If you, if you piecemeal, it does amount to spot zoning or spot actions. It's not called zoning, it's called broad. Spot actions. Where do you spot actions? Everything about a comprehensive plan, just think of the name, comprehensive plan, not individual parcel plan. And that's, that's my argument. What was put in place in oh five and oh eight is law. And it was done with lots of forethought, lots of, lots of emphasis, lots of public input. It's good. It's golden until it's proven to be led. How's that? And I, you know, that's where that necessity test comes in, but boy, that's.
I mean, same thing. You can also, we do have tools that can get you to double density out in these areas, you know, through a conservation subdivision.
Yeah, and they've hardly ever been used. Hardly ever. Here's the part about the comprehensive plan. Even if, so there's something, eight or nine agencies that I would like to talk with, we would like to talk with first and just get them thinking about it. Even if we covered two Friday, that'd take two months to do that. Then, if we start, and, and here, remember before, a couple of weeks ago, I said, start reading the comprehensive plan. And, and it's good to do that as you have time. It's, it's, you gotta figure out what's there and what needs to be changed, amended, updated, whatever. To see, and Milton suggested this long ago, and I kind of balked at it, but I'm coming around. We need to start with the land use component because of existing land use component, as Milton just said, addresses not all the components that make up the comprehensive plan, but it picked the ones that absolutely informed land use. Yeah, you need to have a good school system, you need to have a good road system, you need to have a good services system and so forth. Those inform land use. Unfortunately, the present plan starts to fall apart because it doesn't have the goals clearly stated relative to land use code. They're just wonderful blue sky, no more rain in Bonner County, it never snows, and all that kind of stuff. And they don't, they don't have anything to do with land use code. So, so we need to look at that, but if we started there and then kind of picked it apart, picked it apart and figured out what to do with it, and then proceed that way, I think the other things are gonna come along. So, and that's gonna be the least amount of time, maybe, but we're still talking two years. I'm, I figured out the other night, two years to get, to get two hearings.
No, I think. If we.
With this other change?
Yeah, if we go with this change.
Yeah, true.
And, and, you know, we, we put in a, sit there, be effective at the end of March. I mean, it could kick into overdrive.
There's only, if we changed it, starting at that, in a year's time, we've got twenty four meetings. Two of them, twenty four meetings. If we handled, there's eighteen components in the, in the plan. So basically, that's almost, uh, one a meeting. You know, one meeting we can do, but then that's, that's handling it. That's not discussing it and coming back to it two weeks later. I don't know. This is really, yeah, and a writer and, and so forth, and drafting up language and then vetting that, whatever, through workshops and, oh, boy.
We, we have the summary. Very.
We do. We do, and.
Great idea of how it truly fails and what's it think.
Exactly. And Swati took on the task of comparing the five plans.
Yeah.
So she built a wonderful spreadsheet that is just a big matrix that really just, all the categories, all the reasons why the five plans are listed, it is all how they look. So no surprise, uh, vast majority of the comments in the five areas are very similar. Very similar. There's very few individual, just, oh, this only applies to us. So that was good to see, uh, but, and, and that needs to come out here so we can all see it soon. I think she's almost done with it. Well, we haven't haven't had pre-slate.
Yeah, I was gonna just ask any update on when we might get to hear from pre-slate.
Yeah.
January. Cause we've got, we've got their work, but they haven't presented it to us.
Yes.
Our problems, we really. We're scheduling March.
Well.
Who wants to meet on Saturday?
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna, it's January this week to January six thousand. Twenty two fifty third Highway two, San Point, Idaho. It's eight fifty four.